Be publicly noticed.
Right.
Be a child like one.
You can have them like video to give us inside and the other. Yeah.
You get current. I don't know in this.
I know that Sandy goes to see those.
Motion. We're just motion to change.
Change the word.
I need you to be able to read it. So you know who I am.
Here comes Kyle. He's drawn and spread letters. Evening everyone, welcome to downtown Grand Forks, this is Grand Forks City Council's committee, the whole meeting for Monday, May eighth, under item one, call the order, one, one, welcome, roll call.
Michael.
Here.
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 Great, thank you, under item two, updates.
President Sandy, by name, Mr. Webber. I'd like to move that we change the agenda and bring item three point one one forward in advance of the other agenda items too.
There's a motion to reorder the agendas, there's a second on the one sheet, can you any comment regarding? There you can do, very none, all those in paper, see, have I say none?
None.
Oh, same sign. Which carries unanimously. So we will move forward with item three point one one. Uh, city council agenda formats for consideration, there were multiple different items attached. Uh, Mr. Gossett's memo regarding first amendment guidance on our current citizen comment policy plus example. Uh, agendas from multiple other cities in North Dakota. Um, some identifying their public, uh, citizen comment, um, um, not necessarily policies, but availability. Um, Fargo was actually going to spell out their policy relatively well, two and a half minutes per person, thirty minutes total. Um, I sent an email earlier today, um, to the council members with some of my thoughts of items that we may want to consider. It's still on, can you hear me? No, it sounds bad. Okay, um, there were some thoughts, I had some random thoughts regarding things that were mentioned last week or a couple of weeks ago at previous maybe the whole, um, move, uh, moving uh, citizen comments from the committee of the whole to the council meetings, um, whether five minutes, uh, remaining at five minutes duration for citizens is the right amount of time. Um, should we move citizen comments back to the end of the agendas or keep them at the beginning of the agenda? Um, should they be limited to residents or business owners? Um, should citizen comments be limited to agenda items and, and um, I have another one that wasn't necessarily, uh, that wasn't necessarily spoken up previously was should citizens, uh, should we amend how citizens get their names on, on the agenda or, or get to speak comments, so I don't know. I, I think I, uh, was relatively clear in my email that, that I'm, I'm open to all sorts of opinions and, and I, I will be very honest that, um, I believe that we should limit, uh, council comments to uh, Grand Forks residents or, or business owners. Um, I, I've said it a few times at few meetings, I, I don't see any reason why um, we would allow people that aren't, uh, citizens of Grand Forks or business owners, people that don't actually have business or, uh, the vested interest in our governing policies, why we provide them a, a permit to come in and, uh, speak to, uh, speak to things, especially when they're not on the agenda, so, um, although I, I would amend that thought process to if there are people that aren't necessarily residents or business owners, but they want to actually speak to agenda items, if they actually had a comment related to an agenda item, I might be willing to, uh, to consider that as well. Uh, I guess I've done a lot of talking, I'm happy to just open it up for other people's thoughts or input. Yes, Mrs. Soski.
I guess I would prefer just to leave everything the way it is, we just discussed this six months ago, and I think, um, that we should just kind of keep things the way they are and move forward. Um, maybe in the future, I would be willing to consider some of these changes, but I really feel that we're trying to make these changes because some people may not have liked how things went during the whole Poofing debacle, so I just think that we should just leave everything alone. It's right now, I think it just doesn't make us look very good if we start changing the rules. So, and, you know, we are also a neighboring city of like East Grand Forks, so does that mean you want to allow people? I mean, those people are part of our community also. And so are the people in Thompson and in Manville, and I, I really think that we should be careful on just limiting it to the city of Grand Forks when some of these projects affect our neighboring cities or communities.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Webber, did you, or Mr. Obama, Mr. Webber, yes, sir. Mr. Columbia, go next.
Um, you know, I, I agree with, with some of the statements around neighboring communities, look at all the, the kids that are here for U N D, that maybe they're not, they don't have an address. I think it gets to be that there's a lot of gray, I think the most important thing I want to think about is eliminating the gray. So if we have a five minute time period or whatever the time period is, I'd like the opportunity to use the microphone to turn off. I don't want that to be something that we control. If we're going to treat everyone equally, then it should be a uniformed application of whatever our rules are. So if that's turning off the microphone, I think we need a code of conduct. I think that I can't scream at you right now and probably have no repercussions. So I think as members of society, we should agree to talk to each other in a respectful fashion. And I think that it shouldn't be gray. So whether or not we, we talk about other communities or not, I think at the very least, we need to have some hard and fast rules that aren't open for deliberation.
Thank you, Mr. Columbia. I, I think you're, you're probably right, we haven't done, I'll, I'll take blame for it, we haven't done a good job of of outlining what's, what's acceptable and what's not acceptable. Mrs. Soski.
Um, I think that there have been wrongdoings on both sides of the dais, and so I think whatever rules we put in place or whatever we put into the code of conduct, we need to make sure that we follow those ourselves also, and we are respectful towards our citizens, if we respect that, or if we expect them to be respectful towards us, I think that we deserve to, or they deserve for us to speak respectfully back. So we should be really careful going forward with that.
Certainly. Mr. Webber, yes, sir.
Um, the, uh, the current policy, I think it was passed about ten months ago, but ten months ago or six months ago, part of the policy process is to implement a policy, uh, try it for a while, evaluate and then revise if necessary. Um, and it feels to me like we have a relative degree of consensus, both from council members and from many community members, that the current uh, policy is, uh, is in need of some, some revision. At least that's what I hear from people, uh, on the street, on the greenway, grocery stores, et cetera. Uh, in fact, I hear, uh, comments of, uh, of shock and even outrage about, uh, some of the, the things that have taken place during citizen comments. And with that, I, I have some more direct comments, but Mrs. Soski just made an assertion that there has been, um, I, I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, disrespectful or incorrect behavior on both sides. What, what specifically are you suggesting that we have done incorrectly? Because one of the things that I've been troubled by is, uh, having questions addressed to us during citizen comments and not responding to those questions. It is generally been my habit, uh, as courtesy to answer questions, but I can think of so many instances where we have not been asked a question, but we have been asked to provide an answer. And, uh, I didn't mean for that to ever be disrespectful, but there was, there simply was no question to answer. It was, uh, a game of rhetoric and, and grandstanding that, um, was disruptive to the meeting, so I, I can think of multiple instances where that's happened from that side of the dais, as you put it. Can you only understand what you feel that we've done that was, that we just expect?
I just think sometimes the tone and some of the more smaller just almost smart ass type comments that sometimes people on the side that I've, I have no issue and I agree with you, maybe during citizen comment is not a time to be asking us questions or for us to be responding, I have no issue with that, it's I just want to make sure that there is common respect between us and the citizens.
Sure, so I, I, I agree with you, um, uh, it is called citizen comments, not, uh, citizen time to interrogate uh, individuals, um, and especially when those interrogations, um, uh, go beyond council members and start going to, uh, city staff or even, uh, members of the community. So that comment to me suggests that we have some need to consider revision here. And I think that that's, uh, not listed in, in your bullet points, um, as to what sort of comments we have now. Um, but, uh, that, that may be another thing to add as well. Um, what is legitimate citizen comment? And it's not just disruptive behavior, but, um, interrogation, insults, threats, uh, things of that sort. I think those should be considered, uh, as part of our policy as well.
Thank you, good. Good evening, President, Mr. Webber. Mr. Bean, yes, sir.
Uh, thank you, President Sandy, a couple of things, I agree with, 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 uh, Mr. Palmer said on the code of contact, I think that seems to be something that, uh, would be of value for everybody. Sometimes when comments get to be too intimidating, it actually intimidates people from making comments. Um, I know I've been to legislature and spoken many times and that would not be tolerated, some of the language, and so therefore having something like that, I think would be of value. Uh, I would also say that public input is completely important and valuable for us as we make the decision. So the question for me is how do we make this process work the best it can for both those making the comments and for us to receive them and to receive them in a timely way? Um, that makes sense. Um, you know, at the committee meetings, I brought up before, it's nice to have comments made only about the specific agenda item as it's being discussed, if you can bring some footfall comments to that. City council is a little bit different, obviously you have public hearings on specific items. Again, you want, um, citizens to speak about that item at that time. And then, you know, at the end or at the beginning, however we decide to do it, we would have the open comment time where you could be talking about any subject matter, which again would be controlled. I think some of that, uh, management of, of citizen comment has to come from whoever is facilitating the meeting to and to understand that they would have certain levels of authority to to manage it, stop comments if, if need be, and be able to, uh, make, make the process just work as well as it can, so it's not detrimental.
Thank you, Mr. Bean, Mr. Webber, yes, sir.
Um, just going through three point eleven. As far as the agenda, I, I see no issue in how our agenda is laid out, um, I like our agenda the way it is, I've looked at Bismarck mine on Fargo, West Fargo, I, I really do like the way our agenda, um, is put together, as far as citizen comment. Um, I think I agree a little bit with everybody, um, I think Mrs. Soski has some good points about changing things, um. Maybe we give it a few more months, I think, uh, Mr. Gubami has, has good ideas about conduct, and I think Mr. Bean is the same thing, and I, I can also see that there is um, some relevance to, to citizens of Grand Forks, um, I think for me personally, uh, while I, I sit here and listen every, every other Monday at city council and, and provide my attention, I think I get the most out of public comments from people that call me and talk to me over the phone or, or send an email or, or something along those lines, so I think those are still important ways, um, especially for people in our, in the wards that we represent, and so to me, I, I, I'm a big fan of the phone calls, um, I think you can have a good conversation or whether it's on a walk or something else, I think there's also other ways to get public feedback as well, um, and not and not just here at our meetings, but I don't know what the, what the right way to, to do it is.
Yeah, I think, uh, I, I don't know if, you know, Mr. Webber's been hearing from people, I've been visiting with people, um, asking opinions, and I, I would agree with Mr. Webber that I, I have heard pretty overwhelmingly that, uh, the tone and the rhetoric is unnecessary and, um, I think providing the code of conduct is um, Mr. Columbia is referring to is if, if he would have an example for us, that would be great, perhaps you could share that with the, the council tomorrow for, so that we can have a look at it. Um, I don't know if, um, again, so as I put in my email and as I've already said, I'm not hard sold on any of these things and, you know, as, uh, uh, Mr. Bean has mentioned yourself, Mr. Webber, perhaps getting further input from our citizens wouldn't be a bad idea, so, um, I, I wasn't necessarily expecting us to have any motions tonight or, or make any motions. Um, what, what I would like though is if we, uh, move this item as it is to next week's city council meeting, then we would be able to hear citizens' comments uh, relating to this issue as well. And then if we decide we want to make a motion next week, we can or, or we, we don't have. So unless others, if, if there's further discussion thoughts, yes, Ms. Linsky?
I just think we need to talk about who's going to enforce that code of conduct. Who's going to stop the microphone, who's going to stop the outbursts?
It's a great question, because it's certainly, uh, I think whether people agree with it or not, I think the mayor and I have taken a lot of heat related to Poofing. Because we're the people running the meetings as much as anything. I mean, because we become the focus, because we're spending so much time talking, it, it becomes I'm the problem or the mayor's the problem versus all the people that actually voted the same way on, on those topics, so, um, I, I can only imagine that if there were an outburst here tonight and I had to make a decision, I don't know how well that would play in the Grand Forks areas, for example, right? I don't know, um, I haven't been batting a thousand with that girl lately, so I'm, uh, I, I don't, I don't know what, what would end up getting in print, right? So, uh, I'm not, I don't, I don't think that's an easy because we look for black and white, and there isn't black and white in this situation.
Mr. Obama, yes, sir. So a couple of points, uh, one, you know, the argument for not changing, I think during the heat of this debate, we changed the format. We shifted it to the front of the meetings, we extended the length, and I think, you know, better or worse, I think we thought that was a good idea and we made the decision, so I think changing for the sake of just not changing, I think we should cast that aside and just hear what citizens have to say, and if there is one way or, or the other that, that we feel we want to do something different, I trust that we'll make the right decision with that again. I think that was the right decision when we changed it before. The other thing to, to talk to you and the mayor taking the heat, absolutely, I think as part of the code of conduct, we have to agree that as a council, any one of us can stop the meeting. And we, I think we have to make it, again, it's an equitable thing, and if anyone is feeling that something's out of line or out of hand or unsafe, meeting should end, so I think that part of that is, is as, 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 as you had said, we need to have our own code of conduct. And there's nothing to say that someone can't call the meeting over because of my call. I think it should be, we're all accountable to each other and we can take some of the heat off of whoever happens to be running whatever meeting it is. So again, these are all things I think we need to flesh out, and these are all going to be public documents that we can hear comment on.
Mr. Webber, final comment?
Final comment.
No, no, further comment.
This will be my, uh, we'll see. Um, so you gave us kind of a, a number of steps, six points to discuss tonight. Um, and I'm going to take them a little out of order, because I think, uh, items two and four. Uh, item two is five minutes, uh, too long. Um, it is the longest in the state, is my understanding. Um, but, uh, we did that intentionally and I don't know that I have any, I have no interest in curtailing that time. Uh, I might be interested in the thirty minute limit, which some cities have done, uh, so that we're not hearing the repetition of the same thing over and over twelve times, we would limit that to six times, but the five minutes, I think we should keep the five minute time frame. Uh, number six is how should citizens sign up to speak? Uh, the system we have is, is just fine. I don't have a problem with that, and the, the, the current system is to fill out a, a comment card with a name and address and a, a reference to the, uh, matter to which they, they wish to speak. That, that all sounds good, so two and six, I think are, are pretty easy to deal with. One, three and five are connected in some ways, and I think it's covered a lot of the discussion. One is whether this should, comments should be at cow or counseling. Um, number two is should they be at the beginning or the end? And number five is should they be limited to specific agenda items? Um, I'll take those in reverse order. I think that it's, it would be appropriate to, um, have people speak to specific agenda items, but we all know that there's also uh, more general comments that people wish to make. I think we could have, uh, specific items mentioned at the time of each agenda item with an open period at the end. Um, and part of the reason I, I am in favor of moving things to the end is because of comments that have been made, that some people are intimidated by the comments that, that happen or the nature of the comments, and so we are not hearing from all citizens because they, they, they're intimidated to, to come forward and speak, and I think, uh, uh, Gretchen Graff last week spoke uh, eloquently to that, that point, and I appreciate her comments last week. Um, so, um, moving into the end, agenda items, I think those could be addressed in that way. Um, we have people speak to specific agenda items and other more general comments, we wait till the end. I think one of the problems with the current policy has been that I don't think that I'm the only one who's felt this way, when we have had, uh, council chambers fill up with a, a group of girl scouts or other youth and, uh, they have to sit through, uh, a, a period of, um, of disrespect, of disruption to the political process, I'm, I'm disheartened that that's their first exposure to the political process. Um, not that I don't think people should bring passion to citizen comments, I think that's absolutely appropriate. And I don't think that there has to be a lockstep agreement in the city council, I think the democratic process requires that we hear, uh, uh, different opinions, even contrary opinions, but simple disrespect and, and grandstanding, uh, Jerry Springer type contact, uh, type of, uh, uh, conduct, um, is, is not appropriate for our process, and as Mr. Gauss said, is, uh, frequently pointed out to us, these are our meetings. The number one purpose of these meetings is not democratic free for all, um, it is to conduct the, the, the people's business, and it is our responsibility to do so in, in a proper professional, uh, manner. Um, so I liked, uh, Mr. Bean's comments last week about possibly moving citizen comments to cow when we were first discussing these, having attached to agenda items with a more open comment at the end. Um, if people have passion that they want to bring, then they can, uh, they should, uh, listen to the entire meeting and then bring that to the end, because sometimes we will be addressing their concerns before the end of the meeting anyway. And they might not have known that. Number four is the trickiest of all, but in some ways is the most important. And that is who should be allowed to speak? Um, I'll go back to Mr. Gauss's comments, we have no obligation to even have citizen comments other than I think that we are all absolutely in favor of hearing from Grand Forks citizens, taxpayers, voters. Um, when we have, uh, individuals flown in from out of state to disrupt our meetings or, uh, individuals coming in from out of state or, uh, far flung parts of the state to, uh, threaten, uh, the, the mayor or council members, that's, that's not a necessary part of citizen comments, and I think that we need to have a, a strong consideration of limiting that, thanks.
Thanks, I appreciate that, to that end, um, um, if I recall correctly, Mr. Beauxclaire last meeting said that this was his seventeenth time when he's come to speak, that's over an hour and a half where he's said exactly the same thing at every meeting when all it is is truly a waste of our time when we could be and should be doing the citizen's business when especially he's not a member of our community, he lives forty miles from here. So that, in my opinion, is, uh, something that we need to, to put in the tube, it's, it's not necessary.
And I recall a white supremacist group, uh, coming to council chambers and threatening the mayor. Uh, I don't see why that would somehow be a legitimate part of Grand Forks citizens' comments.
Mr. Webber?
Mr. President, I, I think the one thing that if we do do some of these changes, I'd like to see them individually, voted on individually instead of as a whole. Um, I think there's things that I can probably get behind, and there's things that I'm probably not interested in getting behind, so if we do vote on these things, I'd like to see them voted on individually.
I would agree, I don't think, uh, my points were purely for conversation, they're to be taken individually, and as I put in my email, I don't think it's an all inclusive list. If there are other thoughts that other people have, they should be brought to the table as well, certainly, and, and I would agree, I think, um, if we decide that we want to make some change, we should discuss each potential change individually and then move on. Agreed. So, uh, yes, Mr. Bean?
Just one last question, I know the city of Bismarck encouraged a lot of comments to be via email. Then you'd have getting out to everybody in advance, so I think that's something that we, doesn't have to be a part of policy per se, but the encouragement of that type of thing was also helpful, where you don't have to speak, but we do get their input, in, in.
And those emails become part of public records as well.
I, I would agree, and, and, uh, as Mr. Webber said earlier as well, nothing works as good as a phone call, it's amazing how you, if, when you, when people call, we answer the phone and typically we take actions. Um, I would think that most legitimate issues that come to me from Word Six come to me via email or phone call and they're dealt with and they're never discussed here at the council chambers, because we've already dealt with the issues. So, um, I, is there consensus that we would move this forward to next Monday night's meeting, we can get citizen comments and input and, and then we can have further discussion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Webber, let's move, so move, is there a second by Ms. Soski? Thank you, any other comments for this evening?
It makes sense that we should have citizens' comments.
Yeah, I would agree, that makes sense, okay, all those in favor, City Barbers, hang on. Post same sign. Which carries unanimously, thank you, back to the originally scheduled program, your, uh, item two, it's the information, item is two point one. Classification compensation plan update, final draft report. Bean, what's with that?
Good evening, Council President Sandy and members of the committee. I'm pleased to be here and to introduce our consultant, our, our compensation consultant, and have them present the results and recommendations of our classification and compensation study. We wanted to give you a first look at the study and a chance to provide input and feedback prior to requesting approval of the plan, which will come through the budgeting process. So before I turn it over to them, I would like to thank Mayor Pachansky and the city council for approving the study in late twenty twenty two with the anticipation of implementation for twenty twenty four.
Done, do it then.
I think it's imperative that the city maintains a competitive position within the labor market, um, in order to both recruit and retain employees. I'd also like to thank city employees, department heads, city administration, and Gretchen and Haley on the H R team for their tremendous amount of work that went into um, this study and this plan. Gretchen is online tonight and Haley is also with us here in the audience. With that, I'd like to introduce you to our team from Condrick and Associates, um, that will be going over the study with you tonight. This team includes Gregory Reese and Stephen Condrick, Jan Hansford, their, um, third party, uh, has actually had an alternate commitment tonight, but she's with us in spirit, so go ahead, Steve.
All right, thank you, Tangy, uh, it's really been a pleasure to work, uh, with you, Gretchen, uh, all the H R staff on this project for the last four so months. Uh, Greg Reese and I, uh, been on Greg Reese and I, tonight, we'll go over the highlights of the classification plan. And we have a PowerPoint, a very brief one, but I hope everybody actually has a copy of the report because it may be easier to, to decipher the numbers as we go through it. So Greg, do you want to say a word?
I'd just say good evening. It's a pleasure to be with you. We, we certainly have enjoyed working with your HR team and and getting to know so many of your staff through our telephone interviews. So it's, it's been a really good project for us.
All right. So Greg, why don't you start with a PowerPoint, please?
Okay. First of all, it's probably a good idea to remind everybody of the objectives of the study. So we were asked to do two major things. One was review and upgrade your current classification system and pay plan for all the employees of the city. And then to collect salary survey data so that we could produce a recommended pay plan based on the job analysis that we perform, the job evaluations and that wage survey data that we collected. The steps involved in this process, including, included distributing position questionnaires for all of your staff to complete. We were then able to use the information gathered there as a way to, to inform our interviews, which we conducted by telephone with forty percent of your five hundred and sixty employees. And we made sure we talked to at least one representative of every position. So we, we got a sense of all the jobs. That was followed then by the internal analysis of, of the jobs. And then once the salary survey information was collected, we were able to conduct the external analysis of the jobs. But we had one hundred percent response rate on our salary survey, so we were very pleased with that. If, if any of you know anything about running surveys, you, you know that that's rather unusual. So we are excited that everybody participated. And we were able to gather information from, in North Dakota, the city of Bismarck, the city of Fargo, the city of Minot, the city of West Fargo, Grand Forks County, the metro area transit, the Red River Regional Center and the state of North Dakota. And in Minnesota, we gathered information from the city of Burnsville, the city of Moncato, the city of Moorhead, the city of Rochester and the city of St. Cloud. And from South Dakota, we have information from Rapid City and Sioux Falls.
All right. Thanks, Greg. If we'll turn to page seven in your report, which is table two B. This is the scale that we came up with based on that salary information, based on our internal analysis that we believe will be one hundred percent of the labor market as of January twenty twenty-four. Since we collected this information early twenty twenty-three, we did factor the information by five percent. And when I say one hundred percent of the market, what we're trying to do is to show you what it would cost to be at the mean of the market. So if you had twenty organizations, ten would pay more than you and ten would pay less. Now let's look at a specific example of a position and we'll look at the position of police officer and it's a grade seventeen. So Greg, what is the entry level rate for the police officer at grade seventeen?
That would be sixty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirteen cents.
And so if I had an officer that made sixty thousand, I would move them up to the sixty-four thousand. If I had somebody that made sixty-five thousand, where would we place them?
Then we would move them to step B and they would be at sixty-six thousand five hundred and eighty-two and eight cents.
Okay. And that's the same that we did for every employee. If they were below the salary scale, the minimum, we'd move them to the minimum. If they were between the step, we'd move them up to the next step, up, not back. Now, if you look at page six in your report, which is table two A, and I think Greg is going to show this on the, on the PowerPoint. This is a plan that is slightly higher than the mean of the market. It's a hundred and two point five percent of the market. So that same police officer now at grade seventeen on this higher scale would make butt, Greg.
It's step A, sixty-six thousand five hundred and eighty-one dollars and forty-one cents.
So anybody below the minimum of that would move up. And if they were at sixty-seven thousand, they would move to step B, just as like we did on, on the previous scale. So let's turn to page nine in the report, and this is also table three that Greg is going to show you. And look at the far left column. And this is the cost for the classification changes to implement these new plans. For Plan A, the plan that's a hundred and two point five percent of the market, what's the, the cost, Greg?
That would be one million, three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars and, and four hundred and seven dollars for four point eleven percent.
And the plan that's a hundred percent, what does it cost?
Nine hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars or three point zero two percent.
I want you to note that Plan A only costs about a percent more than Plan B, but it's a hundred and two point five percent of the market. It's two point five percent higher. So you can actually move quickly into the market, a bit ahead of the market at not the full cost when you do initial implementation. Now, as we noted when I was giving you the example of those police officers, that compressed their salaries. It moved them closer together because we're very conservative in the way that we implemented the new pay plan. And so what we wanted to do is come back with an equity adjustment that would move people out into the salary scale. And so the full equity adjustment is one to three years of service. We'd move an employee out one step, four more years of service, we'd move them out two steps. And then we also have a modified version of that that just would move everybody one step if they had one years of, one year of service as of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. And so Greg, why don't you just go down those costs, please?
Okay. So for, for Plan A with the equity adjustment, it's one million, five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars or four point four seven percent. For Plan B with the equity adjustment, one million, five hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars or four point four eight percent. And then as Steve indicated with the modified plans, Plan A would be eight hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars or two point four eight percent. The Plan B modified, eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars or two point four eight percent.
All right. Thanks, Greg. Tangi, I'm going to turn it back over to you and would entertain any questions from the council?
Hey, thank you, Steve. Your team has been a pleasure to work with as well.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I'll just go over a few more things and then we'll have time for the, the council to ask any questions or follow-ups. But as you can see, the overall plan design for your information has been shared with our employee representative group as well as our department head group. The reception has been very positive. The plan is easy to understand. It's easy to maintain and provides transparency to both current and new hires to see annual salary growth. A couple of things I would like to point out. Implementa- implementation of Plan A with equity adjustments runs just under nine percent. And that would place the city slightly ahead of market average. So that one oh two point five percent. We did run the figures for our current salary plan to kind of compare what, where we'd be if we didn't look at the new plan. And those figures came out at about a seven percent. So just slightly above that to put us ahead of the market. So for comparing with other entities and what they're doing in recent news, the state is looking at a six percent and a four percent over the next two years with ninety million dollars in targeted pay equity funding. And other than that, we will be evaluating the finer details of the plan, including class, class placements for positions and adding positions up until the plan comes to the city council for approval with the budgeting process. We will be providing additional information sessions in June regarding the plan design and we'll send out dates and times in the near future. And I would encourage the council to reach out to HR and, and attend one of these sessions or just come directly to us and we'll go over the plan design with you and you can ask questions, give suggestions, give feedback as you have, so we can present that to you as part of the twenty twenty-four budget. Any questions so far?
So it seems like the cities we're comparing to are the smallest of them. It seems like if we should be taking, like they said, ten cities above us and ten below, but it seems like almost all of them have more population than we do.
Council member Lunskey, we, that we are not the, the smallest city of Minot, as well as the county is smaller. There's a few entities that are smaller than us.
Shouldn't, I just feel like we should have as many above us as below.
We did try to look as part of, of designing the comparators. It was, we tried to look at cities that were comparable to us as far as had a major university, had a major hospital, event centers, that type of thing. So we did try to get cities that were regional and comparators to us.
And then how about performance? Is there?
So that is a very good question. We did discuss, if you look at the various steps in the plan design, we discussed making the performance evaluation piece a pass fail. So that step, that two and a half percent would be just contingent on a satisfactory performance evaluation. It wouldn't be incremental like our current plan. It would just be you get it or you don't get it.
Can you, Ms. Beauclair, can you give us a a two-minute, how is this plan different than our current plan?
Council member or Council President Sandy, all salary plans are designed fairly similar. I would say, I, I would say our current plan does a lot of the same things this does, but it's more transparent than the one we currently have. So people can see here where I'm going to be hired in at. Here's where I'll be in four years. It's easier to see than our current plan, but behind the scenes, our current plan does similar to this. However, the, the performance base piece is incremental and is weighted. So you might not get you might not get all of a two and a half percent if that's what's on the table for performance. Whereas this, you would get it if you met the performance thresholds.
You know, another thing I would say, Tangi, is it probably has, has far fewer grade levels than your plan does. And so there's less room for error in classifying the positions. So I think it's a fairer way to, to look at the pay system.
Thank you, Steve. Yes, that's true. And I'm not sure if Steve spoke to this, but this this plan has five percent in between grades where we had two and a half percent in between steps and over ninety steps on the last one.
Mr. Wydell? Ms. Bevett, when we look at some of these cities, how many have we lost employees to?
We've lost to Fargo, West Fargo, the state, the county. Oh, Bismarck.
That's one thing that I really look at is we can survey Sioux Falls, we can survey St. Cloud. We can survey all these communities, but I don't know that we're in competition with them for employees. And that's one thing that I really think about is I'm all for paying our, our employees a good salary and recruiting the best employees to the city. But I'd like to see us model our system after people that we're truly competing with. I've never heard of a city employee in my six years here on the council that left us for St. Cloud or Rochester. And so to me, they're, they're not competitive or competitive in competition with us to get our employees. And so I'd love to see something where we, we look at some of the places you've seen or if there is somebody in St. Cloud or Rochester that we look at, look at them or maybe even other communities. I just don't know. We could be similar to them, but we may, may not be in competition with them for employees. So I'd, I'd love to see some similar to that.
But let me speak to that a bit, Tangi, because the way you're situated geographically, you kind of have to create a labor market. You're not, you know, a, a city that's in suburban St. Louis where they have just, you know, literally thirty or forty cities that are competing for police officers. So that's why we're really conservative and just trying to get you at the middle of these rather than trying to be towards the very top of them. So we did take that into consideration. We're not trying to build a pay system that's far out of line for, you know, for North Dakota. It's fairly similar really to Bismarck's plan where they are.
Mr. Condrick, I, I agree with you and I, I don't think it's egregious by any stretch of the imagination. I just I'm more focused on who we're competing with.
Yeah, I know that is, and that's true, but it's just that you don't have a lot of competitors that are right there. So you really have to kind of create a, a labor market by looking at all of these.
Yeah. Mr. Vian? Kennedy, a couple of questions here. Obviously, we've talked about how to compare to the private, public sector, but how do we compare also to the private sector? When you can have equipment operators that are, were competing for, you know, engineers, all that is outside of the public sector. And somehow we have to retain those employees that may be different than the, and public sector. And then the other one I want to know is how benefits compare to?
Thank you, Council Member Bean. Actually, we don't have a, or a private sector piece in, built into this plan. We do keep an eye on that. Just as, as we are hiring daily and, and we are in competition with the private sector. I'm sorry, what was the second part of your question?
Just on benefits.
Oh, the benefits. We do have a current benefit survey that we, that we maintain. And, and we know where the differences lie in between the state and the, and the county and the city. We, we are short on pension contributions and we are short on health insurance contributions in comparison with state and county. We're pretty top of the pack when it comes to private employers in comparison with benefits, the major benefits.
Mr. Condrick? Just a quick question. Without altering the, the report, is there the ability to add additional cities to investigate, to survey? I think of Missoula, I think of Great Falls, just looking at cities that are in similar climates, that are similar populations, that are very similar to Grand Forks, that are probably in the same boat where they're having to create their own markets. I realize that we're not losing anyone to Missoula, but I do think that they're facing the same challenges that we probably are. And is there the opportunity to just get additional data points without necessarily throwing the whole report away? I just, I do like the idea of some of those sixty to seventy thousand population cities. If we could get direct comparables.
Steve, do you want to answer that one?
I think that you all could collect them. And if you could get the pay plans, we could certainly look at them. I don't imagine that it would, it would change this much at all. It'd just be other data points. Because, you know, we do have, Greg, we have a number for each job, we have a number of responses, don't we?
We do, yes.
And if you'll notice the me in the back in appendix C, the means and the medians for the minimum salaries are fairly close together. So all the day, the data is, is fairly stable. So we're happy to look at those. If you get that information for us, Tangi.
I can do that. Thank you.
Be happy to do so.
Council Member Condrick, you said Missoula, Eric?
Great balls. I just think they're pretty direct comparisons. Mr. Webber?
Thank you, President Sandy. A few quick questions. First of all, help me to understand from A, B to C to P, Q, R, what, what do each of those mean? I understand that A is entry level. What's the distance between A and Q or between those?
There's, there's there, there's two and a half percent between the steps. So it's roughly a fifty percent pay range from minimum to maximum. There's five percent between the grades until you get to grade twenty, then there's ten percent between the grades.
And, and Steve, let me say that, that the, the PowerPoint slide is a, might be a little misleading. We leave out the middle on that presentation. So if you look on page six and seven of the report, you'll see we have A through R with, with, without any of those missing steps along the way. That makes sense. Thank you, Greg.
Council member, did that answer your question?
Sure. And I, I think that I also need to come to some of the workshops. Because it isn't just years, it's, it's how, how well they performed during the year, it's the qualifications they bring. It's, it's a whole series of factors here. Representative Wydell mentioned or asked, who will Um uh Representative Wygo mentioned or asked, who have we lost employees to? I think it's a a good question, but we should also be uh perhaps looking at where have we hired employees from? Because as as Mr. Condray has mentioned, we are in a situation where we have to, in in a sense, create our own labor market. And and I believe that we do hire from uh from some of these cities. We might be losing to some, might be hiring from some. Um and it's worth mentioning at this time, uh it's been mentioned almost every week during the legislative session. We've just lost one of our ver- very best recruitment and retention tools. So it's a timely thing that we're getting this this study. Um can you uh help me again, I think you already mentioned it, but give me the next steps and the timeframe that we're we're looking at.
Um regarding the salary plan or the compensation survey, well, right now, um this was our first look at it, your first look at it. Your time to review it and ask any questions, provide feedback to the HR department. Um this is actually our city's first look at the plan in its entirety. So we have already been receiving feedback um from departments. They did look at their their own department structure, but now they're seeing it as measured against other departments. And so there's always questions and concerns that we need to work through and evaluate. Um and um with last minute budgeting, we do add a few positions to this plan. So you will see this plan come forward um to you, but based on your request tonight, I would say um, you know, in two to four weeks, I would come back with some information for you to share. Um and I can do that via email or via presentation, and we can further tweak this study and come up with a plan that we can support moving forward into twenty twenty-four.
Very good. And primarily, uh the intention of this study is to inform our next budget cycle. Uh so we also have that time uh for me to consider as well. Although uh perhaps uh there may even be a need to consider a more stepped process uh in advance of of next year. I know Fargo, I think, did something mid uh budget cycle. I don't know that I'm suggesting that, but that may be something for us to consider. Um this is uh amazingly tricky work, delicate work that puts you in the crosshairs from council from uh employees who who see you as a champion, see you as the the problem. Part of the nature of your work. Thanks for taking this on. This is the largest part of our city's budget, and uh it's it's challenging work. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
So just so I know, the distance between A and B is one year, and between B and C is one more year?
Yes, correct.
Yes. Um and have you heard from staff? Like, I know the performance issue right now, some people get a two cent raise. It kind of feels like a kick in the pants. But I think eliminating all performance isn't great either. Have you have, have you gotten any feedback from that?
Yeah, I was actually very concerned with that same um that same concept, just because of some um surveys that we did a couple of about a year ago, um indicated that people really like the performance aspect of our plan. Um but then when providing feedback to the employing reps group and then providing it back to the HR department, um they really do like this plan design. They like the performance evaluation piece just with the step itself and not um not the graduated performance increase that pits one employee against each other. This is just to ensure that you're performing up to a standard, you know, acceptable by the city versus better than someone else and worse than someone else. So people um are embracing the thought of this type of plan.
So Ms. Bobette, just trying to boil this down. The this step plan guarantees a two and a half percent raise for all employees every year.
No. Excuse me, Tangi, there there's, it does, it's not automatic. Uh for one, you have to earn it. Your your performance has to be, you know, acceptable, and also you have to fund it. So if you decide not to fund step increases, uh you could have a year where there were no performance increases. So the the council has total control, you know, over what you fund. There's nothing automatic.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Condray. Ms. Bobette, so we, with the, you've corrected me, you know, with the assumption of three, three years in the last twenty years, we've always followed our salary plan and funded the salary plan.
Um as far as I know, I've been here twelve years. I know that there's been three years we haven't funded completely or funded differently.
The best of my knowledge is three years. Um so I think our, the general intention is, if this is what the salary plan is going to be, we will be funding the salary plan regardless of what Mr. Con, I mean, his points are well taken. It's true, we can throw it all out the window, but we, fact is, we don't. Right? We we we've created a plan to take the ambiguity out of it, to take the personal opinion out of it so that we follow the plan. So my question then is, we're going to be asked, we're also going to be asked to fund raises for all of these single steps every single year as well, right? So we're, yes.
You will be, it'll be a requested of the council to approve um the step increases as well as the E C, E C I, which is the employment um
Cost index.
Cost index, sorry.
So in a typical year, where we have our 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 current salary plan, we would be asked to fund the average of the cities that we survey. And let's say it's five percent, some of that's um paid for performance, some of that is marketing. We're we're changing that, we're catastrophically changing that. And we're going to say that, okay, we're do, we're going to do a salary survey. I assume we're going to continue them, salary surveys of others.
So actually, how this plan moves forward is each year or each year, you get the employment cost index and you apply it to your scales. Um so and then that moves up that much and that the factor may be four percent, it may be point eight percent, but it moves your scales ahead. So you would get that, you know, that scale movement plus the two and a half percent. And that's, and so we wouldn't have to survey every year. It would be likely reviewed every four years, three to four years.
All right. And you would be coming to us saying, I'm just trying to understand what the expectation, what am I going to hear when you come to us in twenty twenty-five? What am I going to hear when you say we need this for the, for the one?
You're going to hear the overall percentage, which would be the the cost of the steps um as well as the E C I data combined.
Combined into one number.
Into one number, and I'll break it out into general fund and all funds, just like I always do.
Sounds good. At least I can understand, yes.
So are these the only pay increases that they'll receive or it, like, what about my cost of living? Or is this just everything?
So the steps would be the one piece, and then the E C I data would be essentially, it's your employment cost index, which isn't your cost of living, but it's the cost of labor. And so it it moves those skills ahead, which so
every year they'll have, our employees will at least get a two point five percent raise if they need minimum standards.
If they need standards.
And we, and we fund it. And we fund the plan.
At least two point five.
What, I'm sorry, when's the first uh meeting, the the first informational meeting?
We haven't set up dates yet. We'll send the dates out to the council members, and please join us.
So we're speaking fine. More to come?
More to come.
Great, thank you, uh, Mr. Condray and Mr. Reese.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Awesome. We're right along. Um two point two downtown progress update. Mr. Phelan, you're going to give us a D D A downtown.
Yeah, this is something we have a chief uh team briefing. I think um uh Councilmember V had a good point about kind of where we're at with the downtown developments uh in Grand Forks. And I think we got a real success story. So really, what we want to do today is to give you a heads up on Maras. Meredith Richardson is going to join me, and we have a new Downtown Development Association CEO, Jill Proctor. So she's going to give you some updates, and we wanted to do this in advance of you approving the uh Moon Park and also the the water will to give you a heads up on that. Um Cheryl, that's the more village. Um and so we want to give you heads up on that. Before we do that, council member uh Weber and and a team, we've been working on some of the downtown operational um planning, and I want to give you a heads up on that. So we have been meeting with Public Works, and I'm going to let you all know that Sharon Lipp and the Public Works Department, they're kind, they're in charge of the downtown now area. And so that's primarily street sanitation divisions within Public Works. So they're leading some of the downtown um operational efforts from uh, you know, beautification, stex and all those sorts of things. So thank you for sharing energy, for stepping up to make sure we can maintain the downtown. The other group that's really done a really banging job is our police department through Chief Nelson. And specifically, um Lieutenant Semel has been a great job of trying to do some proactive policing. And so I just want to highlight those two departments that have really stepped up to make sure our downtown is clean and and safe and all those sorts of things. The other thing we've been doing is uh following up their D D A partners and including some of the downtown stakeholders like Hubos and Harys and some other folks. So we've been having periodic meetings just to keep a, keep a hold on what's going on, whether it's during the winter or during the summer. And right now, we're concerned, obviously, we're going to start ramp ramping up with downtown activities and want to stay on top of that as we move forward. The other partner that we have added is Interstate Parking. And so they are um managing our two parking ramps and any other surface parking lots that we have downtown. So they're an additional partner um that we're we're working with as we move forward. Really, our goal is we have, we're going to have um, we're going to have a startup of Franklin and Fourth nearby. Um Olive Ban and Beacon by Epic. And so when those get, all get uh moving forward this fall and into next year, I think our our downtown is going to change dramatically, and you want to be able to manage it and operate it in an appropriate way too. So um the other thing I want to do and highlight too is uh is we're going to move forward with the downtown Grand Forks water treatment plant redevelopment. So we're going to kick that off. We could involve in all the, you know, four, five, six projects downtown. So we're going to kick that off, and we'll we'll bring that back to you and what are actually kind of that and get your your feedback and input on that. The other thing that's going to come back sooner rather than later, we're going to meet with Epic tomorrow. And as you recall, Beacon by Epic had that public event space. And the intent is, once they got the um two buildings up, that we were going to look at that event space, we were looking at selling the revenue bond that would be supported by those two buildings, and and that was going to sell a revenue bond, plus or minus, in and around seven million dollars. And that was going to create that that space. We are meeting tomorrow with Epic, and we're going to discuss that construction estimate and see where we're at. We also did set aside, as you recall, some one point one million dollars of some of our beautification money that would help, that could help supplement and making sure that we get all the amenities in that space that we wanted at that point in time. So we're going to meet tomorrow on that, and I would suspect in the near term, community whole meeting, you're going to hear more about kind of our action plan moving forward that those particular projects. So with that, I'd call on Meredith Richardson and Jill Proctor to finish up the presentation um regarding the downtown work and stand for any questions that you may have.
You may, Ms. Richardson.
Thank you. Cheryl, could you go back to that previous slide, please, with the map? Thank you. Um this basically shows the the work that has occurred in our downtown that's kind of implementing our downtown action plan. And that downtown action plan grew out of the vibrancy initiative. Some of you were here with me on that. Um that wrapped up in twenty sixteen and really had two main focus areas. One was arts and events, and through that process, we really kind of transformed the way we do our rebranding programs for arts, special events, and and how we use our beautification program. And then the second key element was the downtown. And the group came up with a wide range of of some pretty great ideas kind of arranged with short-term, intermediate, and long-term. Those ideas really, it it became clear that we needed a little help to implement those ideas that came out of that vibrancy initiative. And so that's when um R D G was hired to to do the downtown action plan. And as this map shows, um this is pretty much what has occurred since that planning process concluded in twenty nineteen. Um the the items that are flagged in blue are are the things that Mr. Phelan mentioned, and they'll be discussed either tonight or in the near future. Um on tonight's agenda, we've got bids for Town Square and Moon Park improvements, Beacon by Epic, of course, and and then water treatment plant, which is, you know, kind of a a hundred-year redevelopment opportunity. Um when Jill gets up with her presentation, she has some images that were taken from that R D G plan that kind of highlight each of those, you know, the streetscape element of the plan, the parks and open space element, the the redevelopment strategies. And and it was really kind of rewarding as I was going through those old planning documents, looking for images to to find this map that had been included in R D G's plan that talked about short-term and and long-term target sites. And so of of that plan listed four near-term sites. All of those are either under construction or completed, and it listed six long-term redevelopment strategy sites. And half of those are under construction with Olive Ban, the Beacon, and the Franklin on Fourth. So it's it's really quite rewarding to see that this worked just the way it was supposed to. And you're smiling, Mr. Weber, because you were, you were there.
Oh, no, I'm I'm blown away by how how busy you've been over the last uh, a lot of this is last five years. It's it's remarkable to see it in scenic graphic like this. Congrats, and thank you.
Thank you. Well, the, for instance, the streetscape, you know, when when R D G completed the plan, I don't think they even got the plan completed before those streetscape concepts were being turned into plans and specs for the diversity construction. And Jill will show you an image of those concepts, you know, they didn't show the exact light pillars that we have. The idea of bringing light to our downtown in a very unique way, we got there. So again, very rewarding. So um the last slide, Cheryl, before I turn it over to Jill, this just shows some images of the beacon, which again will be a a transformative project. But also just want to leave you with a thought that even though the beacon is in a small way in competition with Town Square, that paddle wheel image is part of their advertising material. And the photo in in the top left is is from the Nissler Building, and and you can see that paddle wheel. So um that, can't take credit for that with our downtown action plan, but but that um design element was incorporated into Town Square has just become an iconic figure that is used to represent Grand Forks throughout the community. So for that, I'll let Jill have a, I'm going to turn it, what the D D A is going to be doing with Town Square.
V, thanks for being here.
Thank you um for having me. Thank you, Meredith, for the introduction. Might you have a presentation, Cheryl, if you have that? I can certainly just start talking too while I come down. Um uh my name is Jill Proctor. I'm with the Downtown Development Association. I thought I would just start off um and let some of you know who we are, because some of you were here when we came in front of council ten years ago and asked for you to get behind this kind of crazy idea about downtown organization, and some of you were new. So I thought I'd just give a a quick history of um who the D D A is and the progress that we've made over the last ten years. Um some of those steps that we've taken, um since two thousand thirteen, when we came in front of council was um Vote No to Grow campaign, which we're pretty proud of. When you look at the map that Meredith was referring to, it was the first uh development project that came along, which then has kind of paved the way for all the other projects that have come after it and all the ones that we're still seeing today. So we're pretty proud of that. We've grown to now a full-time staff of three people, um which is pretty great since across the state of North Dakota, other downtown groups that have been around for decades longer than we have are still at just two staffs. So we're just continually growing, and it really did start because of the support of the city council. So thank you so much for that. Um, thank you. So there's this, there we go, perfect. Um if you could go to this second slide, please, that would be great. Um, second slide. There you go, okay, there we go. So that's just a progression of the organization and some things that we've done over the years. And then if you could go to the third slide, I'm afraid. So this is the downtown action plan for reference, which we talked about. Um you can see an incredible rendering of what um R D G and the community kind of thought Town Square could potentially look like. Um I think there was approximately nine hundred community members that gave input on that space and what they would like to see it look like. Um you can see some of the elements that Meredith uh referenced in both uh kind of corner photo um down at the bottom of what lighting looks like, the water treatment plan, and then an overall kind of view of what um Town Square had the potential to look like. So if you could go to the next slide, please. Um after, shortly after um R D G presented their plan, um in two thousand eighteen, then COVID came in twenty twenty. And then all of a sudden, there's this beautiful idea of the And then all of a sudden, there's this beautiful idea of the beacon that came. And that really kind of paused the conversation around what does redevelopment of Town Square look like? And so as a downtown organization, we really took a step back at that time and thought, what is our role, um, in the public spaces? And how can we actively partner with the city, um, to improve the downtown spaces that we have? So this is kind of what Town Square, um, looked like prior to us asking the question, where do we fit into this conversation? And so we met with senior city leaderships, we met with our board of directors, we also met with our visionary partners and members and asked them specifically what our role is. And we had an overwhelming, the DDA should get involved in improving our public spaces. So we set out pretty quickly and started looking for funding as a nonprofit 501(c)(6) with just three staff. We don't have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars laying around to make public spaces look great. Um, but through the support of Lowe's Hometown Grant, which was an opportunity that we were awarded, we're the only, um, city in North Dakota, South Dakota, Minnesota and Montana to have received, um, the Lowe's Hometown Grant. So we're pretty proud of that. That was a hundred thousand dollars right there. Um, we had also partnered with Visit Greater Grand Forks and the Myra Foundation to fund some of the updates. So if you could go to the next slide, please, Cheryl. Um, some of the enhancements that we've made in Town Square, um, you can see some of the visuals on the slide there where we, um, did some painting on the stage. Uh, was, city was an incredible partner with us on that, making sure that the pavers in the Town Square were level. Accessibility was a huge issue for us. Um, we hosted a softball, adaptive softball game in Town Square. And if those papers were in the same condition they were before, there's no way wheelchair could have successfully gone through that space. So very grateful for the partnerships with the city to level the pavers, update some of the electrical that was in there, that was flawed that impacted the different events and farmers markets that were hosted. Um, we did a lot of painting. It's amazing what painting will do for a space. Um, all of it was pretty much original, as you saw in those previous photos, um, from when the space was created in 2001. So we took a focus on making sure that it was ADA accessible by bringing in benches, um, that met that criteria, um, removed some of the seating that wasn't, um, very helpful in some of the activity that we're seeing in there. And then tried to make it really multi-generational space by bringing in different activities. Um, so that has led to a lot of placemaking pieces. We're really excited to roll those out. Um, our funding and our efforts kind of wrapped up in fall, so we couldn't really showcase, um, what that space will look like going forward. Um, but we did have the first ever U N D Homecoming Pap Rally in that space, space in partnership with U N D. So that was a lot of fun. And that conversation actually created the new Grand Forks mural that you see just adjacent to Town Square. So the DDA took the lead on that as well. You can go to the next slide, please. Um, this is kind of what it looks like out here, but just what some painting and some activation looks like is vibrant colors. So we're pretty proud of the space that, um, that has become. We're actually seeing it used a lot differently already, which makes us really excited. Before, I think you spent a lot of time in there, um, working with our transient population and PD and trying to find out the solution so that it was a more welcoming, inviting, safe and vibrant space for everybody and didn't have necessarily the activity that was going on. Go to the next slide, please. So what we're really excited about next, um, we created a partnership with Big Co. So, um, they actually laid all the infrastructure um, over the winter, which was great to see them put heaters over concrete so they could keep the process going. But we will be offering, um, free public wifi in that space, um, within a matter of weeks. And we're excited to bring the second, um, mural to the Town Square stage. Right now it's a blank wall, so it is pretty much primed for some type of, um, mural to go in there. Um, we're excited to see what you do with, um, some of the, our free funding that will come around for you next week. Um, because we would love to initiate a fundraising campaign through the DDA to replace the playground equipment that's currently in there. Um, it's kind of an eyesore when you look at everything else being painted where you've got faded different, um, definitely used playground equipment. And I think the kids in this neighborhood, um, could really benefit from new playground equipment. Um, we're really excited to see, um, Rim Park be, um, the, uh, infrastructure redone in that. Um, it floods all the time. So it's not a very inviting park for, um, the downtown community and businesses to, um, use that space. And I think we're most excited about a parking paddle wheel. So those are kinds of the things that are on the horizon for us. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Proctor. We're also excited about the paddle wheel, but, um, well, first of all, Ms. Richardson's already said congratulations to you and your team. Mr. Phelan, I think that you probably were involved in every single part of this all along the way. And, um, Ms. Proctor, uh, congratulations on, on taking over the leadership of the DDA. And I know that you've been involved in, in much of these, uh, projects as well. So we're excited to see what you do as well.
Great. Thank you so much.
Great presentation. Um, I have a two point. Yes, Mr. Bean, sorry.
I have a question for, for Todd and Richard. Is there, has there been any discussion about updating the aesthetics of the parking ramp? That's been in there for probably
I mean, the central ramp.
The central ramp, the central parking ramp, I think it's been in there for 40 years or something. It's probably due to, with all the other great things going downtown, that you should look at somehow, we can update the looks of that.
You know, it was discussed a while, the, the front facing has kind of got that, uh, old school rock look to it, but Meredith, any answers on that one?
Well, the short answer is our needs exceed our budget and the initial investment that we're looking at will be security enhancements and lighting upgrades. Some of those will be aesthetic, um, better signage. As Olive Ban comes closer to fruition, we're, we're hoping that with our new partner in Interstate, we get some of those kind of basics back up to where they should be. Aesthetics, I agree with you. Um, we talked about perhaps a mural on the Fifth Street side of the parking ramp. But that doesn't counter the fact that, as Mr. Phelan mentioned, it's got that exposed aggregate that's pretty dated. So, um, we're certainly happy to do it. It's just a funding constraint.
Right. And I, I expected that, but I think at some point it's got to develop into a priority for us. Because I think everything else is looking quite amazing and
I think when you look at that ramp, it's at the center point of, uh, Beacon by Epic and events and also Olive Ban and their events center. So that's gonna be one of the most used parking structures, um, in the community is because it's gonna be the center point for all that parking.
Now, that is being managed by a, a third party now. Um, and will that, will part of that be their responsibility?
I would say Council President Weber, they'll be in charge of the day to day operation, maintenance and vice and small cap items, but um, all the heavier lifts are gonna be as part of City Grant Works.
They're a property manager with a property owner.
Yeah.
Um, and I know that, uh, well, maybe it's been a few years now, but, uh, there was a, a great renovation on the inside, uh, cleaning that up with lighting and paint floors, et cetera. Thank you, Ryan. Um, but, uh, the outside could certainly use some. Will there be a same change in, in signage and operations as well with the new, uh, property manager there?
Council Vice President Weber, that, that'll be one of the prime things of signage and operated, uh, in doing all the customer service and wayfinding. That'll be kind of the primary thing that we want Interstate to do and to really run it as a professional Parkinson's.
Anything further? Uh, moving on to item 2.3 Memorial Village 2 project updates.
Council Vice President Weber and members of the community. All, um, this project, along with the next project, which is EpiNee Energy, we have scheduled a local government advisory committee meeting on Monday, May 22nd at Fort Bane. Both of these projects will be discussed from a um, tax incentive perspective. So we thought we'd give you a heads up on now where these projects are going. In particular, it's Memorial Village 2, as it has a lot of moving pieces. I just want to introduce some people that are here this evening. Steve Burian is gonna lead the development, uh, team as part of, uh, as part of the briefing. But he also has with him Craig Treaton, uh, Kevin Ritterman are also part of the development team. Also want to give a, uh, discussion of, Mr. Albert is here and he's in the back here. So we're gonna talk about the softball field. This is an NCA. And we're gonna talk about a donation, uh, two and a half million dollars. And so Mr. Um, Albert is, is part of that. So he's here this evening by chance. And so if there's any specific questions, he'd certainly be willing to do that. So it's really important that we move forward. Um, this project also, I named a development group, I, I named, you know, we'll call it the, the donor that, uh, the U N D Alumni Association's working with. Also U N D itself. And Steve's gonna show you a graphic of what U N D is trying to do on the east side of campus, which is pretty darn exciting as we move forward. I just want to give you a heads up when we talk about the local government advisory committee, that, that entails us working with the city, uh, the public school in Grand Forks County. Those are the three taxing entities, because this, this incentive will also require more than five years to get this across the finish line. We also have Kayla Hewitt from Baker Tilly. She's online. She's gonna be here on the 22nd to discuss. I just asked her to just talk about kind of the performance and concepts of where we're at as we move forward. Um, we're also gonna talk about, there's a gap between what the donor can afford as part of the softball and what it's gonna take. And so we're gonna talk, Marina, I'm gonna talk to you about Fund 2163 as part of a gap financing loan. And so there's lots of moving parts in this incentive. Um, but at the bottom line was what we're trying to do is get the project to move forward and be a nice compliment to the Pollard Center and Memorial Village 1 and all the other great projects that are going, are gonna go on on the side of campus. So with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Steve to give the overview of the project. And then I'll talk about some of the pieces that we're, we're moving forward with. And really when time out with the city piece, to make sure you're informed of what we're doing. You understand the concept and our general concurrence, because they will come back to you as part of getting this project over the, into the end zone and, and making it happen. So without any more to see.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. And Mr. Albert, thanks for, uh, being with us this evening. Welcome. Mr. Burian.
Vice President Weber and members of the city council. Can we move the slide vision just up to the first? Think this, and then if you click on that single, I think it would go down to just Michaela on the teams part. Or there's, there's a little single dot and then a bigger one and two. If you go over to the far left one, it'll give more of the screen visibility. I can start following.
Very good. We'll work on that.
Okay. So thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. I'm here on behalf of Memorial Village Investments LLC. Um, this is a private public partnership project with the University of North Dakota and, and likely ultimately the city of Grand Forks in terms of looking at bringing some more modern and, and, um, exciting, um, facilities to the city of the University of North Dakota, where there's currently a parking lot. And so as you see this particular building here, this is looking at it from the southwest corner. And so you can see the existing walkway over Columbia, should be on the left side of the drawing. You can see the existing parking structures. So the old vision was to put another parking garage on this side as well. And so that's how they had things, um, originally configured. They realized that parking needs have changed over time. And they also realized there's better, probably better use for that particular high profile corner of University of Columbia. There's, um, supposed to be another walkway then from Memorial Village 1. And what we're gonna talk about tonight is, uh, mixed use facilities with, um, one or two floors of commercial depending on, on interest. And then two to, um, I'm sorry, four to five, three to four stories of residential, all landing off of that parking structure. And then I'm going across the duration of the parking lot there. Um, we are trying to put better finishes in things to make it consistent with the high profile look of U N D. Next.
Steve, would, would you mind taking a moment and just, uh, uh, that first slide, um, or any of these? Can you orient us to where we're at on the, on the, so it's university, where's
On the far left hand, upper corner, even though it's at an angle, that's University of Columbia. And so university would be right along the north side of the building. Um, Second Avenue would be running along the south side of the building. 25th Street will be right on the far side of the site. And then Columbia runs on the west side of the property. And that walkway that says University of North Dakota is going to cross Columbia when you come over the overpass.
So this is a new, uh, walkway.
No, that, that one exists, the one in white is still being conceptualized.
Very good, very good. Thanks.
This just shows that the site from the northwest corner, I've given, given you a sense for the commercial spaces where there's gonna be um, some areas for patios and then that type of thing and some roof decks. And then you can see the, the look along, here's the avenue. We have received some feedback from city planning, that they may want to have a little bit more character on that north side of the building. And we've certainly taken that into consideration. And then it's a little bit misleading. There's a, a series of, of freedom elms along the boulevard. And we was just met with, um, forest folks in town and those freedom elm are, are highlights of, of the tree types and species that are in Grand Forks. And so we're gonna preserve all of those freedom elms in the boulevard. And so it'll look much more, um, environmentally friendly than this more stark boundary that you see now. There's quite a few big trees next, and those big trees are all, um, cottonwood. And then we understand that cottonwood are, are more difficult to have in town, because they tend to grow very fast. They tend to break off in big chunks and they tend to leave all that cotton everywhere. So we will lose some of the bigger trees due to the, the less desirable species, but we're gonna preserve the smaller ones that are desirable species. Next. Yes.
Is there any parking in this new, in the new development? Is the main floor parking or underground?
So perfect segue into this. No, that's great. And so underneath all of this will be underground parking. And so now we're looking at it from the, the southeast corner instead of the southwest. And you can see that the entrance into the parking will be right in that, that near portion there. It'll go down a ramp. And then there'll be underground parking underneath the entire building. And then you can see all of the surface parking that we're putting back into the parking lot, um, on the south side of the building. And then that existing tower or walkway goes over to the university parking tower structure. So we'll have three different forms of parking, plus there is some off-street parking in the area as well. Does that answer your question? Okay. And then you can just see, I guess, more of the look of the building from the south side. You'll also note in the forefront here is what we're calling the perch. And there's gonna be a community area inside that building. And then there'll be a, an area there. And it's not shown as well here, but the softball diamond is in the lower right hand corner of this. So whether it's, um, parents or spectators or whatever, they'll be able to use that community area as well as watch the softball game from that perch on the building. Next. This is just a little bit of a start for you, but this is that north view where Andrea thought we could probably spruce things up. And she makes a good point. Um, the forestry folks also suggested some smaller trees and gave us some good pointers on how to keep those growing by using 10 by foot, 10 foot squares instead of what engineers typically do with two by two foot squares, as you get the drip line and then some benches and things. And I think we'll try and get a, a bike path through there as well. So it's gonna be very nice on the north side also. Next. Great. I don't have control over my button. Uh, this is the softball diamond. And so if you're looking at the far east, one third of that parking lot, this is good, gonna be a new state of the art competitive softball for the, um, U N D women's softball team. You can see the high performance center in the background. Um, that's intentional. Um, right now, um, softball is over at Ray Richards. By moving into campus, they'll be able to have their locker rooms and the coaches' offices and things inside the new High Performance Center 2 expansion. And then they'll be able to segue out here for their softball games. And then they'll have that big indoor, indoor complex as well connected to it. So it's starting to provide another nucleus for U N D athletics in addition to the one they have with the Ralph Englested Arena. Next slide. Um, I think some of this has changed since the last time I presented. I won't get into a ton of detail, but we are planning to have 43,100 square feet of commercial space. Um, the, the main tenant is projected to be the U N D bookstore, where they moved that from its current location. I think there's a demand for medical opportunities in that current site. The current site is kind of out of the way. Um, U N D bookstore has become more of a merchandising type facility than they have a bookstore in this modern environment. And so it'd be right there on the corner of University in Columbia and right across from Student Union to provide that merchandising. And then you can see some of the other things that we're considering. There is some other space in the building that would be really conducive to commercial. So as we go to sell that commercial, if we get more interest, we may make it commercial. But the fallback plan would be to make the remainder residential, if we don't get any more interest. Um, we're looking at 167 units in the building, a mix of one bedroom, two bedroom and four bedroom. Uh, there will be some, um, studio and some, um, ADA as well. We've had some interest in a VRBO. And we thought that was maybe a little bit of a stretch, but the university loved that idea, because they end up with faculty and um, administration that gets hired, where they need transitional housing and sometimes it's difficult to find. where they need transitional housing and sometimes it's difficult to find that in Grand Forks. And so this was the V R B O is seen as a neat way to accommodate that as well as maybe like parents coming to town and that type of thing. And if we get more interest in that, we might expand as a bit. And I think when we presented Memorial Village One to you, we talked about how important some of these amenities are to housing these days. And so there'll be a lot of, of amenities in this building. And then we will do some sharing with Memorial Village One and Memorial Village Two. Then I already mentioned the softball perch in that previous slide. Um, the current cost, I think we were at fifty four million previously with the two building concept that we had with current interest rates that just really was not constructable and feasible. And so we were able to bring the single building cost down to forty four million without compromising very many of the units and we can make the performal work at this reduced price. Next. This shows you that the softball complex again, um, this is the orientation that the N C A likes for the, you have the batter's box and then in the southeast corner and then um, go in this direction and, and hit out to the northwest. Um, there's going to be neat amenities for fans to have different areas to, to gather to watch the game. Um, it's going to all be turf. And so the idea is that we'll be able to get student athletes on here much sooner in the year and, and much sooner after a rainfall and that type of thing. One of the reasons we cut back the east part of the building was to eliminate any shade on this area because we do in the spring and the fall end up with some pretty low sun. And so the result was to try to not create too much shading on this so that you get as much sunlight as possible. And maybe different than what you indeed did in the past, you, you'll notice that the new administration athletic department has really made the Fritz Pollard Center a community resource in addition to just U N D one. I, I could compliment Bill Chase for that philosophical approach. And one of the major benefits of this is in addition to U N D softball, this envision that Grand Forest Public Schools would use it, regional high schools use it, the Grand Forest Park District would use it. And then it could potentially be like a home for tournaments and that type of thing as well. So it creates a really neat immunity for U N D and the city of Grand Forks. So pretty neat. It does have to stick softball. It doesn't have the longest fences. And so we have to feel careful that, you know, if we get too neat of an idea, you could end up with balls flying in lots of places. And so it's important that we remain in softball conference. Next. In terms of schedule, and this is why I was hoping to slide that a bit, but you can see that our, our goal would be to work through the, the process of the TIF and pilot that Todd's going to talk about and Michaela will talk about historically and then in the next month or two. And then we're working on, work on the design and bid package. I'm hoping to have some type of initial demolition and groundbreaking. I think we started some movement on M V one in July and then had the groundbreaking in August that seemed to work pretty well that we got the site a little bit cleaned up and got some momentum and then picked an August date for groundbreaking. And we can think we can have the facility uh, completely constructed by June of twenty twenty five and we have the softball complex done sooner than not. Next. This is just a little nuance that Todd asked me to speak about as Michaela um, presents later. So when you look at property taxes, one thing we didn't recognize and even the city didn't really embrace when we had the previous discussion on M V one is that there's the property tax for the land. And then there's the property tax for the improvements. And because these are university properties, neither have ever been paid. And then when you segue to having the alumni association and foundation be the landowner and then they do a long-term lease with the developer, the land taxes are non- abatable, if that's a word, you can't do an abatement for the land taxes. So for instance, we've already paid our, our land um, tax payment to sixty seven twenty four for twenty twenty two. And we'll continue to make those payments in perpetuity as long as it's leased. And then we did a, a rough estimate for twenty twenty three for the Memorial Village Building Two. And so you can see that as you talk about either a pilot or a TIF, as you, you talk about the improvements, recognize that there's a baseline thing that I don't think we ever talked about where you end up paying property taxes on the land. And that cannot be granted to be. So this is another new tax um, payment that comes to the city and the county and the park board. Next. Um, with that, there's quite a few improvements that are going to take place in the vicinity in terms of infrastructure. Um, some of this is being done by the University of North Dakota. And some of it is done, be done by the city of Grand Forks and some of it will be done collaboratively. Maybe I'll just start with yellow. Those are the more U N D centric things. So in the left-hand side, I think you might have heard where as long as the governor signs it, it looks like there, there will be money for a new upstem corridor and new college engineering and mines building on campus. That would result in the demolition of the hislot. So on the far left side of this drawing is that particular demolition that's planned. If you look on the far south and, and left side of the drawing, there's an existing parking lot there that after Memorial Village is done, the university plans to completely rehabilitate. Um, the E R C is looking at tearing seven buildings down and building a new building in the far lower right hand. And that's under design right now. And they'll be moving one of their storage buildings into the, the kind of the center part of the, of the field there. And so cleaning up a lot of the E R C site is a major new facility. And then in my day, there was that housing project that never ended on the corner of twenty fifth and, and university where they just kept doing improvements and improvements and improvements. University ultimately bought that and tore it down. And as part of all this development, they are planning to put a parking lot in that particular site. And then you can see in pink is Memorial Village One. In um, this north pink is Memorial Village Two. Um, the green is the Pollard addition right to the west side of the current high performance center. U N D is also looking at putting in a new track and field. They're not going to change the geometry of it much, but as you walk around that, that will all be new as well. They're looking at extending the parking lot on the north side of High Performance Center and marrying it on that parking, north of the parking lot for the E R C and the softball complex that we've talked about. And then maybe the less sexy part, but the part where that gets city involved is they are looking at putting new sanitary sewer along Second Avenue up to twenty fifth street corridor and then ultimately to a lift station that's up in University Park. Um, they're looking at putting a stormwater pond in that's in bright blue. And that'll accommodate much of U N D's campus as well as some of the surrounding city development to attenuate flows and provide some water quality improvements. Then that will ultimately flow up to the storm sewer in University Park. And then the kind of the melon color, if that's fair for me to say, would be the, the street rehabilitations. Those are a phase in your capital improvements plan. And maybe the one that would have the highest priority is figuring out if we could do something in that, in that first block on Second Avenue. So we don't get all this new infrastructure or new development in place and have to come in and remediate that. Um, University Avenue, I think is in a couple of years. And then depending on all the other moving parts you have, I think Second Avenue is planned all the way to to, to Washington at some point as well. Next. I think with that, that summarizes what I have to say.
Stick around.
All right.
Cheryl, next slide please. That's an exciting vision. Um, but without, and I think in this project, we're fortunate to have the institution and University of North Dakota as a partner. Um, because they, they have funds. And so we're fortunate to have the development group that wants to take the risks to move this forward. And we're fortunate to have a benefactor that wants to help move forward with softball um, field too. And, and so we have lots of things going on in the city. Um, certainly we want the taxing entities being the counties will approve this. However, the truth is, is, and we know this without the city of Grand Forks going above and beyond the tax incentive regarding infrastructure. Um, this project's not going to move forward. So all those moving pieces from University Avenue to Second Avenue to twenty fifth, um, all that water related infrastructure, those are all things because this was designed in the parking lot. It's going to get fully developed now. And so all the things that were done all those decades ago are now actually renewed and moved. And so that's going to require the city of Grand Forest partnering with U N D and developer to make that happen. So a lot of moving parts, but we are working with them as part of this project. I did speak to the fact that we're going to talk about this pilot. And Michaela's on here too. So we're trying to figure out, it's likely a twenty year um, pilot. And we're trying to figure out how much of that increment can help support that softball diamond. Um, what can that building support? Because we know all the, the two taxing entities want to see something upfront. And not just do a twenty year, a hundred percent uh, to move this project forward. The other thing we've done is, um, we don't want to lose the interest of Mr. Albert because um, the other point is his daughter plays on the, on the softball team. So he's really has an interest right now in this. He's got lots of passion. And we want to be able to capture what all this passion that he has right now. He's uh, my understanding is dedicated two and a half million dollars to this um, from all the various interests. And so God, God bless him, right? He comes to town. He's from Chicagoland area and he wants to invest in the University of North Dakota, in the city of Grand Forks. Well, we don't see that very often. So and, and then he comes here to a city council, the, the kind of guy he is. However, um, if you look at the beacon by Epic, that public event space, we propose to build uh, to do a revenue bond. And you know, Marine, we're going to come back and talk to you about that. That's seven million dollars is going to fill up that space. In this case, there's a gap and my understanding, we've right done as part of the performance, have set aside a million and a half. And I suspect if, that the developer came up here in U N D, they'd want two million dollars to fill this gap so that from that two and a half million dollars to make sure that softball diamond becomes what, what they want it to be. And that could be up to two million dollars. Um, we prefer not to sell a revenue bond at this point in time. Interest rates are high. And they're even higher when you do tip bonds like this than a, a regular utility or geo bond. So it's, it's going to be a higher interest rate. So what we propose, and this is why I'm in front of you, what we propose is, and again, we're just, we're the paid help, right? And you guys are going to have to approve this, is that we would use, in this case, I have a growth fund, but I've taught and speaking with Marine, we would likely use twenty one sixty three, which is your, the city's economic development fund. That we would propose a loan to fill this gap to build this field. Um, the first goal was to try to get the loan paid off in ten years. And my understanding is trying to just look at, you know, trying to make the project happen. They probably likely need um, twenty years. We've talked about a two percent loan or a three percent loan. And of course they want as low an interest as possible. And so again, the city's going to be involved from infrastructure to the pilot to the financing of this particular project to get it across the finish line. So there's lots of moving parts. And I wanted to get in front of you sooner rather than later to let you know all the things that have been going on to try to make this project happen. And because I have Michaela, she's going to be here in a couple of weeks. I just asked her um, if she could be online, just to give her a concept of what she's seeing with this performance. What you may see in a very, in a general sense in a couple of weeks from now when she comes back with what she thinks this project needs to move forward. So with that, um, uh, vice president, um, whoever, if I could call on Michaela to give us the summary.
Please, welcome, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you. Good evening. And I look forward to seeing um, being there in a couple of weeks. Um, as, as Todd said, we were retained by the city to do an independent financial review of the request for financial assistance. Um, the request that's been presented is um, a property tax exemption for up to twenty years, which um, would reduce the operating expenses and provide for more uh, or additional cash flow that would be required for the development team to meet the minimum debt coverage requirements and targeted returns to allow the development to proceed. The um, financing for the project is the, again, the forty four million dollar um, estimated total development cost financed through a combination of debt and equity. Um, as part of our review, we are analyzing the annual operating uh, revenues of the project, including both the commercial and the residential components as well as the operating expenses and um, really understanding how the, the property tax exemption um, as requested is necessary for the project to proceed. And again, um, to provide for that cash flow relief to make the minimum debt coverage, the, the debt coverage ratios as required um, to obtain the private financing and um, provide um, reasonable returns to the project upon completion. Um, we are currently wrapping up our analysis and making some additional um, recommendations. Um, and again, what we're anticipating is up to twenty years of a property tax exemption. Um, and again, the details being worked out between what the recommended um, percentage of exemption would be and how that correlates to repayment of the um, the, the loan um, for the stadium financing. And again, more details will be provided um, shortly for review, but would be happy to address any questions on the financial analysis.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Stewart. And we look forward to seeing you in two weeks. Are there any questions from Ms. Stewart at this time? All right, I, I have just a comment, which is, so we will put in the, the city will put in the infrastructure. Uh, the TIF for pilot, whatever we decide on, this is where we're often accused of handing over cash to developers. We're not handing over any cash to developers. Uh, in fact, we're giving up a hundred percent of nothing uh, because what we're currently collecting on this property is exactly that. We're collecting nothing in terms of property tax. And aside from the TIF pilot, we are already starting to receive more than we've been receiving. Uh, with the property taxes paid in twenty twenty two, uh, that's already going up fifty percent of this, this year. Um, so uh, that's part of what we're looking at and we will hear more specific on that in two weeks. Every developer has the right to ask for twenty years. Um, the decisions from Ms. Stewart and her team uh, vary depending on a number of factors. So we'll hear uh, what, what she has to say about that. And then uh, this growth fund loan or the, the twenty one sixty three loan, this is a, a new innovation. Um, but certainly this feels relevant to economic development and that, that's what these funds are for. Uh, so with that said, any questions for Mr. Phil and Mr. Bean, please?
Well, first of all, I think it's a great development and, and the forty four million dollar investment in the community, everything from construction uh, and sales tax on construction. But also I was looking at the forty three thousand square foot of commercial space will also have sales tax benefits that will come back to us too. So the for me, I see just a lot of benefits to what's going on. Probably the biggest concern I have is do we have the parking for this thing both short term and long term? Um, because uh, I know it's, that parking is less used than it used to be at, at one point in time, but you know, with, with forty three thousand of commercial space, you still need parking for that and you still need access for people attending this, the soccer game. And not that that's as, as big a problem because you got obviously the ramp there. But when you do run out of space, it will expand into residential area. That's probably where my, one of my biggest.
As for the whoever, Councilor Bean, I'll try, try to answer that. And um, Associate Vice President Mike Peaper has been leading most of the parking um, analysis from like a major perspective. So if you look at the University of North Dakota on an aggregated level, they're actually have more parking spaces than they need currently. And so that is obviously an advantage for this particular project. Now we're going to provide some new density in this particular part of town that we don't have right now. And so with the, the combination of the underground parking and the surface parking that we're planning, some enhanced off-street parking, um, some additional parking lots by U N D, the ramp there. And then some potential to like park in the E R C lot after hours, park in the, the new south um, university parking lot after hours of the current stance from, from Associate Vice President Peaper, when you look at all of that, that we're going to be in good shape. Um, President Armacost and his team have asked the same question that you've asked and we've had specific meetings to go through the details with him. And it's our understanding that he is now comfortable with moving forward from that perspective.
I'm not sure that exactly satisfied, but I know what's being thought through, so.
You know, we, we've matched with like prospective tenants and looked at the turn that they think they're going to have on the restaurants and things. You know, in talking to the, the restaurant owner, and this is going to sound like I'm being clever. I think you used smart something. I don't mean to be that in the, the, the meeting today, but um, the, the restaurateur mentioned that, you know, I don't have any good parking at any of my locations. This is going to be wonderful. And so from his perspective, you know, he's crammed in some different downtown settings and four different communities. And he just kind of gets what he gets. And here with that large parking that we're planning on the south side, he actually sees this as, as being an abundance of parking from a commercial perspective. And then that ramp is definitely underutilized that U N D has, much like your ramps. And so that will fit into the mix. On Memorial Village One, we are um, partnering with the U N D parking office. So we as developers and managers aren't going to get into the parking permit and enforcement business. We're going to let U N D um, do what they're good at and, and leverage that. And we've found some pretty collaborative ways to make that work. So I know it, it doesn't answer a spot by spot basis. We have more metrics, obviously, if you're interested in that. And we can bring that in two weeks.
I mean, it's a great development.
Yeah, I'm interested.
I was just saying.
Sure, Councilor.
I was just saying, sure, Council Vice President Weber and members of the committee also plan to bring this to the uh, local government advisory committee on May twenty second. It would then move forward to whatever that recommendation is to the uh, June fifth city council meeting. And at that meeting, we'd ask you to set up a hearing, uh, date likely, you know, thirty days in advance. And then in between, whatever that recommendation is, we have to go to county and the school district at that point in time. So that's uh, the important part is they want to get going with construction here that from Stephen in July. And so plus or minus, we're in and around that. Time. And it's certainly if we can move that forward, it provides a greater amenity. And not only for you and me, but the um, the community, I think it leverages that Pollard Center that the community does use. And we'll probably also that's some of the use that we want to, you know, the community wants to move forward, the turf and court facility. But certainly this is supplementary to the community too. And, and with, you know, being you and he being gracious, the community uses, it's just one more asset. And we're going to lose the Islam bowl. Um, we're going to head back in and track, I think, that the community is going to be used that we lost. So this is really adding back a couple of facilities that we used to enjoy the U N D as, as we move forward. I would say one more thing, Mr. Weber, you can make the um, the twenty second local government advisory committee. And so um, Council President has asked, um, Mr. Wybelle, since he's a growth fund, uh, committee chair to substitute for you as part of that meeting. So at least we have two council members to come back here and let you know a lot of discussion on why we've recommended whatever we have either on this project and also be putting the energy on that.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Gooden. Uh, Mr. Albert, we, we don't often get two and a half million dollar gifts in the city. Um, is there anything you'd like to come forward and say to me? Just.
Not because I just appreciate your efforts, which kind of makes this a bit of a reality. It's a great benefit as Todd mentioned to the university. And uh, I know there will be great things for the community as well, because the reality is the university will have limited time with the weather and season. Will mostly be a community aspect and. I'll take that realization now and for you, Wendy, but.
Thank you for your consideration and thanks for taking the time to be here. Um, moving on, uh, anything further, Mr. Weber?
No, thank you.
Uh, item two point four, Epitome Energy uh, Project Health Day, um, A, uh, Draft Development Agreement.
Yes, uh, we have uh, attached and one, one of the lessons, one remaining, and uh, I think Mr. Bean brought this up is that, you know, we, the city council. He, on behalf of the city council, he'd like to see things sooner rather than later. So I want to let everyone know this is the, a working draft. Um, so we're still working through it as city administration and we haven't gotten any feedback. Um, input um, from Epitome Energy, but in the spirit of trying to get things to you sooner rather than later. Um, is that we thought we'd give you a heads up on tonight. Also, the reason why we want to let you know, similar to this Memorial Village Two. Is this is going to go to that local government advisory committee too, as a one part of a larger whole development agreement. And similar to Memorial Village Two, these projects don't move forward without the city of Grand Forks playing many different positions on that. So Cheryl, if you could add that um, PowerPoint, I'll, I'm going to run through the PowerPoint. We, I've been working with not only the city staff, but Sean Gaddy is here for me to ask to answer any questions. And I'm going to ask Mr. Gossett, just to kind of give you an overview of that development agreement too. Our next slide show. There we go. And so again, uh, I'm going to, I'm going to give, let you know I'm under number two. And I think generally the development agreement, I'm going to just how we're proposing to serve the project at this really working draft stage. And Mr. Gossett giving the development agreement overview. Um, we're going to, this is going to be different than what we had proposed with Foo Fong regarding some thoughts for covering things. So we'll just highlight some of those things and then talk about the pilot itself and give us the case examples regarding that. And so we're in discussion on all these things, not only with our community partners, but also with Mr. Ian of Epitome Energy. Lots of more work to do, but so we're bringing in early. Next slideshow. Again, we, we've highlighted this, uh, what kind of facility this is. And the important part is the bottom line, it's about a, a four and twenty million dollar facility. Um, and I think when you look at what we're going to create here, the soybean oil is certainly valuable. But if you look at this last, let's just say, session, Governor uh, Burgum and legislature really moved hard on moving forward with, um, as they call animal agriculture. Quitting our secretary of ag, agriculture here in North Dakota. So you look at that soybean meal, uh, that was supposed to mainly go out to Manitoba where they have a. More animal agriculture than we have here. But I can, I think if we get further investments, a lot of that soybean meal will stay here in North Dakota. Uh, as we move forward with that. Next slide. This is applied that uh, this is the one A slide and, and Mr. Egan has been here to talk about that. It's just north of where the city's landfill is and north of where um, the proposed Indian fertilizer plant is just off of uh, uh. I twenty nine to the north of Grand Forks. Really the great part of this site for Epitome Energy is it's near, near the rail. As you can see, the, the new rails and red and interconnect with an existing rail system. And then would um, would basically front seventy thousand north um, on the very south end. So really the, the, the really prime location of this is really to fit rail. Um, there, I'm going to go through some of the challenges of us serving it, but we're trying to find the best way that we can serve them with other utilities. Next slide. Again, these are the things we, we focus on, both portable and firewater. Um, it's not a large user, user for portable water, but the firewater supply is, is one of the challenges on our side. So you can see um, the kind of water supply that we need uh, to provide fire protection of this particular site. Uh, under the process beneficial reuse, we had proposed to use gray water or be sort of reuse. And so you can see between three hundred thousand and four hundred and twenty five thousand. That's not a large number. So if you look at what J R Simplot is, they use our drinking water supplier, portable, they're about two million gallons per day. So this isn't a large order of magnitude. It's, it's a pretty reasonable facility to serve. And then even on the wastewater collection, you can see between eighty five thousand, a hundred and thirty five thousand. This is not a large user and when people were shocked not by Foo Fong, as you recall, they were about six point six million gallons per day on processed water. We were going to use raw water in the river at that point. And they were about two and a half million gallons per day on the wastewater collection side. So you can see the order magnitude, magnitude of this facility is, is significantly less than Foo Fong and who we already serve in J R Simplot. Next slide. Stormwater line, again, we're proposing a lot of that to be on their own site and transportation. We have used Bolton make it. And we have, we have a draft traffic study on this particular plan. Um, not only is the North Dakota DOT reviewing that, but also Community Energy is reviewing that. And a lot more details on that. Uh, next slide. This is one of the challenges. And so if you look at this particular side, we are in um, are partnering with Agassi Rural Water. We are in their district. So whatever we do from a processed water and a, a drinking water side. We're going to have to partner with Agassi Rural Water. And so we are working with them on, on going basis in this particular area. You can see, if you look to the very right of the slide, that's in and around the highway one area that we spent a lot of time talking about. That's where we would in, in, propose to interconnect a sixteen inch water main at that location. Head, head west underneath interstate and then head north along fifty fifth to the site. And then um, come back around to the west and down south. So we would essentially loop this large water main. That would be used for both portable water use and for fire protection. And we would loop it to our system with a large water main like this, we need to loop just larger water users. And this is how we propose to serve both the portable and fire protection. The challenging is a, is a significant investment in why the line is as large as this is. We need to provide fire protection in this. And so this, this line will do that. In working with Agassi um, Rural Water, right now the state um, cost share through the Department of Water Resources is up to seventy five percent. For rural water systems for cities, municipal entities like Grand Forks, it'd be a sixty percent cost share. The important part for us um, from Grand Forks is for us to get the sixty percent cost share. This line has to be used for portable water use and fire protection. And so they will not, the state of North Dakota will not fund this line. And it's just for fire protection. So we're trying to link both of those entities onto itself. I know that Epitome Energy, they could be served by Agassi Rural Water in this area from a portable water perspective. So they're weighing their, how best to serve it. But again, I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of the city of Grand Forks and how we would serve this particular. Next slide. This is the wastewater reuse. So you can see to the bottom left of the slide, that's the um, distribution line from our wastewater treatment plant to the site. And this would be for the gray water that we talked about, that three to, three to four hundred and some thousand gallons per day to serve them processed water. The North Dakota Department of Water Resources will cost share um, regarding the transmission line. They will not cost share on the wastewater treatment plant improvements, but they will cost share on the line itself. With the city, they would cost share at sixty percent. And if this were a rural water project, they, they cost share up to seventy five percent. So we're going to be a combination on both the portable fire protection line and this process line. We're going to be working with Agassi Rural Water and also the Department of Water Resources to help us, help get this um, particular project um, forward. If you talk about the Castleton line, that's great water, both to serve the Ferrelson ethanol plant. And also they, um, coming out of the ground soybean crushing facility, they are using City of Fargo's gray water. That line is coming from twenty plus miles away. So the state of North Dakota is helping to cost share on that line. So we're much more strategically located at this, at our site versus what's happening at the Castle site as we move forward. Next slide. This is wastewater collection. And so we're trying to beneficially use um, this pump station that was posing in this area. A lot of times we come to you and um, whether it's with the highway eighty one area that we just talked about, or whether it was with Grand Valley, we built pump stations, the city funds them. And we serve not only the industry, but we serve like an entire area. What we're proposing with the, with um, the amount of volume that we're going to bid with this pump station, that we would build a pump station, wastewater pump station just exclusively for Epitome Energy. Um, as we move forward. As you can see, the lines here, you can see a red line. We have, the landfill is just to the south of Epitome. Uh, energy project. So that red line is a wastewater force main for the landfill. So uh, if you work on landfills, landfills create leachate. And so that force main is for the landfills, leachate to go to our wastewater treatment. We would propose under this case to, to save some upfront costs that they would pay for their pump station. They have that area in blue would be new force main, but then they would interconnect with our existing force main for the landfill that would save some upfront money. So what would happen though, that, that force being from the landfill is, our landfill is a ninety to a hundred year landfill. So it's going to be around a while. If we should live so long and we keep landfilling on things. Eventually that landfill will grow into that line. And when that happens, we're going to have to expand that force main. And that would be an additional cost for Epitome Energy at some point in the future. That could be happened twenty years from now, thirty years from now, at some point into the future. But in the meantime, let's use that infrastructure. That's how we're proposing to serve it in this case. Next slide. In a similar vein, this is stormwater management. All these innovative things we're trying to do here is because we're away from the city of Grand Forks, we're trying to lever. Whatever infrastructure we have in that area, mainly this landfill um, infrastructure to try to lever as much as possible. So if you look at that uh, purple line right there, that would be to interconnect, the landfill has a, a stormwater outfall. And so we would allow Epitome Energy to build that line and then interconnect to a lateral line. That's a stormwater line for landfill. And then it gets discharged to the Red River. And so again, we're going to allow them to take some of that capacity that line that we think we can afford. And that would help them offset having to build an outfall um, that we already exist on, on that and along that avenue that goes to the river. So again, we're trying to beneficially use um, some of the landfill infrastructure and some of the existing city infrastructure to serve this particular property. Um, next slide. This, I would say, if you look at the fire protection of the site and you know, if you look at the highway eighty one area. Um, period Lorenzo come up here and say, we're, we're by using Columbia Road, fire station were four to five minutes away. It's, it was really an attractive area for us to serve. This area is much further away than from that. We're, we're five minutes plus from there. And so you can just look at the amount of road infrastructure that's going to be required. So as part of the traffic setting, and we're still working on this with the North Dakota DOT and Epitome Energy. But if you go from south and north, you see a darker line going up fifty fifth street. That darker line, as we've talked about, I'm going to call it the Simonson's Logistics Park that's been in front of you. We're pla- planning to pave that first, you know, segment of that road to get into their logistic park. But as you go further north to the site, which that, that additional three plus miles. That's all gravel intersection and a lot of it needs to be improved. It's more of a township type road. And so that's a significant improvement that we're going to make in that area. If you look as you go further north off of highway eighty one, we're going to have to improve seventieth avenue to the site. So that's in about another mile of pavement. And then you can see kind of the dash line, which would be improved gravel roads. And so all told, that's about seventeen point four million dollars. And when we talked with. Um, Epitome Energy, they've had questions. Do we really need to um, improve fifty fifth? But we're going to have soybeans coming from all different directions. We're having them coming from west and east, north to south. And, and what do we need to do to improve those? As you recall, when uh, Mr. Bernstein was up here talking about various programs to help on this, there was the North Dakota DOT set aside. I think in and around a hundred and sixty nine dollars for the last road. And that was really intended for projects like this to, how do we get um. Facilities like soybean crushing facilities that are near the city, but not that near. And how do we help partner with communities like Grand Forks to help fund some of this infrastructure? The challenge we have here is we have, we have the last miles to get this done. The other funding source is the North Dakota Department of Agriculture. They set aside some infrastructure funds for projects like this too. And so we're going to be trying to lever as many of those funds as possible onto this particular site because this is the big lift. Uh, the other areas, this is in the county currently right now, um, much in this. And so that would be another partner that we would want to talk to as part of trying to move this project forward to. Because we certainly have funds that are set aside in the county or farm or market and in most sources. So those are all the levers we're going to try. So I just want to highlight this, the road infrastructure and the fire protection are two of the challenges we have from the city of Grand Forks. The other stuff, I think we can handle breeze. Next slide. I'm going to ask Mr. Gossett to come up and give you just some highlights about where we're at with the development agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Beal and I, members of the committee, um, a couple of things to bear in mind that the development agreement that you have. Is, and I think Mr. Beal spoke of this earlier, this is a working draft document. Um, which means that we've, we've had some preliminary review of it from the city uh, perspective, but it hasn't been completely vetted from the city perspective. And, and that means there may be more likely be changes to document itself, some of the terms and conditions of the document. Um, as we get a little bit more detail, uh, a little bit more vetting of, of the agreement itself from the city perspective. However, to keep this moving along, we sent it to Epitome with that understanding, this is a working draft. We expect them to re- uh, review it and, and write comments and, and we work through those issues. Um, and negotiate the agreement to reach whatever rights uh, each party might want within the agreement or, or not within the agreement. It's part of the negotiation process. Um, so I would expect changes. Uh, but the agreement itself contains what I'd call the framework. Um, and how the parties are going to work together between the, the city and the developer. Um, it's not the obligation, it's not the approval that the, that the uh. Plant will actually be built because there will be conditions, just like you saw with Foo Fong uh, project. There'll be conditions that have to be satisfied. They'll be have, have to meet certain criteria. They'll have to get, we've used this term before. You'll have to get all the governmental requirements from whatever government authority might have jurisdiction and authority over these, these matters. It doesn't obligate the city to construct the um, infrastructure. Um, until the conditions are satisfied. Now, there'll be some, maybe some one-off type of projects that the city, because of the way this gets developed. Might have to agree to put in uh, one or two one-off type of infrastructure items because of the, the, the timing of things. Okay? Um, it also is intended to provide that financial security for the city. Um, there'll be reviews, there'll be engineers that'll be hired. Um, and, and it's intended to provide that financial security, just like we, it was done with the Foo Fong uh, agreement. Now, I didn't intend to go through in detail all of the various provisions tonight because it's a working draft, right? But I can go through just briefly in some of the uh, some of the sections. Again, the first section just will provide definitions that are used throughout the document. Um, section two uh, deals with what each will do if the conditions are met. Meaning they'll build the facility and will open in the infrastructure, provided the conditions have been satisfied under the terms of the agreement. Um, section three really sets out uh, what they, what are the expectations with respect to the construction, both from an infrastructure standpoint. And from their facility. The reason I put in standards for, for us with respect to what our standards are for infrastructure. Is so that they understand what those expectations are because that may lead into costs that they'll pay for. because that may lead into costs that they'll pay for through special assessments. So they understand we have to meet certain thresholds as well. And 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 those thresholds then have some cost to them. So we have standards on both sides. The financing section four is financing and how we're going to pay for those infrastructure items, whether it's a take or pay through wastewater or the gray water, where they have to pay a minimum amount in order to service that that debt. That's a little different than a special assessment, but it works kind of in the same in the same vein in that we'll have a utility service contract that'll set forth the minimum amount that they have to pay regardless of how much they actually use. There'll be special assessments as well for for the infrastructure. Section five will talk about utility rates and fees. And this kind of ties into what Mr. Philan talked about with respect to the wastewater line and stormwater line. There are differences from this agreement than the food bank one. And this is one of them where they're using part of the facilities right now as part of the capacity. That reduces their upfront costs. But when we need that capacity back, the agreement will or the utility service contract will provide that they'll have to pay for that capacity, the return of the capacity back to the city when we need it for the landfill in the future. So the development agreement addresses that upfront. So everybody knows what the rules of engagement will be when we enter into those utility service contracts. Section six contemplates pilot. Again, we I haven't seen, there is some discussion later on in this in the presentation about what that might look like. But that's something that that they're still in discussions with with Epi. Section seven is the letter of credit. That's the financial protection that that you would expect for those type of costs and expenses that wouldn't be wouldn't be recoverable through a special assessment. I'd call them soft costs because we can't recover them through a special assessment process lien that you get with the special assessment. And that's what the letter of credit would cover in the event we had to terminate the agreement or there is a fall. Section eight are the multitude of conditions that exist that are in favor of the city. So these are conditions that the developer will have to satisfy in order for us to be obligated to move forward with their infrastructure. Section nine would be conditions that they have, the developer has with respect to they're moving forward with their with their project as well. Section ten has various representations and warranties from the developer. And and be mindful of that, the the way it's drafted right now is those conditions have to be, or excuse me, those representations have to be accurate. Not only at the time the agreement is executed, but throughout the term of the agreement. So they actually become conditions that have to be satisfied throughout the term of the agreement. And then section eleven is just through the is the, as you suggest, is the default provisions and remedies. Be mindful that there's also the termination clause that that exists as well. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions or if you don't want to wait till I have the presentation is done, I can wait then too.
Questions here must have been asked at this time.
Next slide. Thank you, Dan. Next slide. So Dan talked about this. So right now, how we're proposing to fund this. If you recall with Fofong regarding when we talked about the raw wire that was going to provide them or anything specific to them, they were they proposed an escrow account. And otherwise, they were going to pay cash with their upfront capital. In this case, in a similar situation, we're having to have an accept or pay because we we intend to finance those improvements over time to them and that they're going to have to pay for those through rates. And so obviously, if something happens in the future, you you bought that asset, you're going to pay for it over time. So it's going to be a different this case. I suspect we started out that way with Fofong doing a take or pay. And then they decided along the way, we'd rather pay upfront, pay cash for that. We'll see what happens, but right now we have this take or pay. The other form that we propose to fund this are through special assessments that would be attached to the property itself. Next slide. So one of the questions and and reason why we're here is because of there's multiple moving parts to include this paying a little tax. So what we did is look at the comparison project. So what we've been told is if you look at the Castleton soybean crushing facility, that's very similar to the one that is going to be built here in Grand Forks. Similar technology, similar contractors, those sorts of things. Cast County led this particular project. They had to partner with Castleton on, I think, some of some of the fire protection things. But generally, Cast County led this project on behalf of of the government. And so they they settled on an eighty-three percent exemption over fifteen years. The other thing that Cast County also offered as part of that deal is to up to three million dollars for transportation improvements to get to the site. So I didn't have that on here, but if you look at what they gave, it's an eighty-three percent exemption over fifteen years with the three million, up to three million dollars to help improve the roads to the site. That's what Cast County approved. In the Spiritwood example, they have an exemption level, what we can determine is sixty-two sixty-two percent over fifteen years. And then you can see the other incentives that they provided. And I would just point out the last one, a two million dollar milestone based grant because I think they're in an industrial park in Spiritwood. I would say their two million dollars is most closely tied to Cast County giving the three million dollars to get their site fitted up. I think that two million dollars is really intended for them to to move into that site and do infrastructure development as part of the Spiritwood development. Next slide. We all know about Fofong USA. Again, we approved a ninety percent exemption over the first ten years and then seventy-five percent of the the succeeding ten years. And then I would say the closest one we've had are we've had two, thankfully, JR Simplot expansions. Number one is in twenty-ten, JR Simplot determined that they were going to grow into Grand Forks. And so they improved their wastewater pretreatment system, they built an anaerobic digester, and they invested twenty-six million dollars into that facility in twenty-ten. That was a big deal for the for the community and the region when they did make that investment. If you look at that exemption, if you total it over ten years, that's essentially an eighty percent exemption over ten years if you just average everything out. And then in twenty-eighteen, they came back and wanted to move forward with one of three high bay freezers. Were one of three in North America. We were the first one they built here. And so the city council at that point approved an eighty percent over ten years. And you just did a flat, trying to get money upfront as opposed to doing a hundred percent for the first five years and then decelerating that exemption. So that's what you did in in their case. Next slideshow. And then we've we've asked in the developer of a pin manager, you know, what were you proposed to get in in Kristen with the state of Minnesota? And so the city of Minnesota is different than North Dakota, but my understanding is this, that they were provided a, were going to be provided a hundred percent exemption over nine years. My understanding is that, I haven't looked at that, but my understanding through the developer is under state code in Minnesota, you're allowed up to a nine-year tax exemption, property tax exemption. So they were planning to get the max on that. And then my understanding is that that tax, that tax value that would have gone to this community goes back to the developer to help develop the project itself. So whatever that property tax or product in goes back to the developer to help develop a particular project. The other thing I was, we've been told is that they were going to be part of the bonding package for the state of Minnesota. And the request through Kristen would have been to build, help them build infrastructure from a grant perspective. And so we're still waiting additional information. So we're just trying to compare what they got in other locations within North Dakota, what Epi Energy may have gotten in Minnesota. So when we get to the committee itself, we'll have some further information. And one of the things we heard a lot of them clear with Fofong, when we keep brought that back to you, that it was too big. We already had the ninety over ten years and eleven over seventy-five or twenty-five. We haven't guaranteed any. I'm just providing examples. And we wanted to let you know sooner rather than later. And just so you know, we have not offered anything in particular other than some case examples. Next slide. We've also looked, just so you know, the the area. So we're we're focused on the one A site, which is the Epi Energy site. You can see just to the south of it is where the proposed Northern Plains Antogen site is. And then we've also looked at it as a one B site is that acre business park area. And so there's two areas. There's the the section with three hundred plus acres that we worked on with the Fofong project. And just to the south of it, we had some conversations about that. The additional corintal land that is under an annexation agreement. And so that's made up of our seven hundred acre plus or minus acre business park. So we're going to continue to work on the site that they really want. But we're also going to look at, we're looking at alternative locations and what those various costs will be as we move forward so that all of our eggs aren't in one basket through forward. Next slide. So again, a lot of coordination. Again, we need to stay in North Dakota and thank goodness, we have a governor and Governor Burgum and state departments that want to have Grand Forks succeed in this project. So we're going to be working very much in depth. We're going to engage Grand Forks County not only on the pilot, but some of the infrastructure components. And then Agacity of Water, that's going to be a different one. We're going to have to partner with the rural water entity in this project. And we, this is one of our first projects of working in that regard and of course, Epi Energy. The other unique thing with the tax core incentive coordination, we're actually in Mandeville Public Schools. And so I think that Seventieth Avenue Road, which is the southern boundary of the site to the south is Grand Forks Public Schools, to the north is Mandeville. So I've been up at Mandeville Public School for me and given given them a heads up that this is coming and they'll be part of that local government group too as we move forward, not the Grand Forks Public Schools. And then of course, the county and Epi Energy will be part of that. Mr. Goss, that talked about the development agreement. One of the lessons learned that we had is that we should engage the city council sooner rather than later and get you involved and have you ask, ask, ask questions or add things to the development agreement that are important to you because it's going to be a few months process that works through all these various things that we're going to continue to give you updates on that. With that, I think that's the last slide, but we'd stand for any questions, Mr. Goss and Mr. Gaddy and city staff are here to answer these upfront questions that I know is early on in the process.
Any questions? Mr. Philan, please.
Philan, just some idea of what the timelines are going to be so we can don't read it right now, but as we look at what it's going to be completed, I appreciate getting the information early and then just making sure that I manage my time to work within those twenty percent.
The last, we talked with Mr. Egan of Epi Energy. They would like, their goal right now is to get a fall start, do some cycle this fall. So I anticipate between now and through the summer, August, September, we're going to be looking to wrap up this development agreement. So I think we got a, I think we got about three months to work on this. And they really are intending to get, try to get some work started on this fall. They are working on their, as we said, with the Fofong project to include this, the air permit is kind of a holy grail to projects like this. They're working with the North Dakota Department of Energy Quality on their air permit. And that's that's going to take a few months too, but they're in the process of that. So I think our development agreement and air permit will work in parallel. I see Mr. Egan is joining us too, so I don't know if he has anything further.
Good evening, Mr. Egan. Did you wish to say anything?
No, I just want to thank you. I've had the opportunity to listen in tonight. Just wanted to let you know I'm here in case you had other specific questions for us.
Thank you. Any any further questions, Mr. Goss, please?
Just a quick question. So item number ten point one point three specifically states that they have to comply with Senate Bill twenty-three seventy-one pertaining to any ownership interest or investments with foreign entities. So that's clear. That is a stipulation that has to be maintained, not just an initial stipulation, but has to maintain.
Right. And just so you know, that bill was passed by both the Senate and the House Representatives. It was sent to the governor. Last I checked today, the governor hasn't signed the bill. But if he doesn't sign it or veto it within a certain period of time, it becomes law under our constitutions.
Thank you. In fact, I think we received a green light from Mr. Burgum.
Mr. Burg.
Mr. Burg.
I think their concern on this project, and we talked to Mr. Egan, is right now everything is clear and plain. But in the in the opportunity that there would be a purchase or acquisition, I think the concern was and that was discussed with us is that China's interested in soybeans. North Dakota sells them a lot every day, but they're also interested in purchasing facilities like this. And I think with CFS and all the things that are happening, it's going to be awful challenging for any company in China to buy in North or in the United States. But that was the main concern, that something happened in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Philan. Anything? There is nothing. Why don't we start the committee poll meeting now? Item. See, item two point one, three point one. Let's go down to three point one with on the teams. Item three point one, special event, La Quintina Car and Bike Nights.
Good evening, Vice President Weber and Councilmembers. This is a second year event that has come forward. La Quintina Car and Bike Nights, it's owned by the former Rockwell area. They have already a class four moving beverage alcohol coverage license to serve alcohol. This is, and they can sell within their business and also on their patio. They're asking to include the area around the patio where the vehicles and the bikes are shown.
Second, we have a motion in a second from Mr. Salsky and Mr. Pomey. Any questions or comments? Hearing them on a favor, signify by saying aye. Post in sign, motion passes, thank you. Item three point two, pedal bump consideration.
Council Vice President Weber, we have two gentlemen here that would, that we've asked to provide a briefing on this, another exciting project pedal up. We have Mr. Tyler Piper and Mr. Justin LaRocque. And I think we give them an opportunity to describe what they plan to do in Grand Forks and obviously East Grand Forks. And then have Mr. Goss come up here and say, if you guys are so amenable to this idea, what will we have to do from a local government perspective? So that's how it runs.
Very good. Thanks.
All right, so thank you, guys. I'm Tyler Piper, this is Mr. Burgum, Justin LaRocque. We are here today to see what we have to do to make up a reality we've gone through and everything got passed. I think Mr. Philan put on the attachments. The legislation changed to the state, meant some of the Minnesota ordinances. So it's all legal and stable on both sides of the river. And we want to figure out there's something else that we need to do to hopefully get this project running in the summer. So the pedal pump, he has already what the is a now classified as a multi-pass car bike in state of North Dakota. And it would hold up to seventeen people, including a trained pilot that we would employ. And then our goal would be to run tours from downtown, both in East Grand Forks and Grand Forks and provide some options for additional tourism, partners and bars in the area and hopefully drive some traffic and give the community something fun.
Any questions?
Where are you going to store this pedal bike during winter months?
Winter months, we have to find an indoor storage facility. We're talking with a couple of hundred places in town. So like a lot of like a whole store, yeah, old storage, your camera storage.
Will there just be one pedal bike or?
In grandness. Listen, took off faster.
Can we be the first?
Has East Grand Forks given approval?
Tomorrow.
Well, I make a motion to approve this. Do we want to hear from, there there may be some legal ramifications that we will. We can, what's up? But but if you want to, do we have a motion?
Oh, with your own emotional way from Mr. Goss.
Thank you, guys. Members of the committee. As was pointed out, the state legislature made some changes. It was really with respect to the open theater and actually Representative Maug is one that approached our office and and my office and and Kristi Paddock also provided some comments as to some of the changes that should be made to make this available in Grand Forks. But that doesn't end the end what needs to be done. We would have to, similar to what we did with the electric scooters, adopt some rules with respect to the operation leaves on the streets. Also, there a licensing type of provision, again, similar to that electric scooter that we passed, I think, last last year. I'm now currently working with City Fargo, the city attorney, because they're also being approached in the same vein. And there are, I think, there was a ordinance from Minneapolis. City Fargo attorney shared with me ordinances or that a baseline ordinance that was from Wisconsin. So we use that as kind of the the method to come up with a licensing mechanism here. Couple of other things we'll have to amend.
Um, a couple of other things, we'll have to amend some of our uh ordinances with respect to open container. Um, that was one of the changes I was made to state, they excluded the definition, this uh pedal pump from definition motor vehicle, which then uh would by default eliminate that open container provision. Um, we're also, they also in the states, uh, we have DUI ordinance. They made the change uh on the state level as well. Uh, but it was directed at what they call the pilot or the driver. Uh, if they're intoxicated or having an open container driver, they're still subject to those rules, but the passengers would not be. Um, we now, I also have to change our open container, uh, we're going to be clear that a passenger on this uh wouldn't be subject to an open container. Um, and we also have a couple of ordinances that deal with the consumption of alcohol on public streets that would also have to be modified. So if you're on this, on a street and you're on pedal pop, you wouldn't be subjected to that uh ordinance, the families into that ordinance. So there are some changes that have to be made um to our city codes.
And Mr. Hesse, uh, the, the pedal pump would be coming from East Grand Forks during a tour of Grand Forks, setting back over on the diverse bridge. Uh, so uh, is, is that, so is that our concern or DOT's concern of the bridge?
Well, um, I think it's probably going to be the DOT's concern. Um, but we also have some concerns because we have these. Man, I, I know how fast I can pedal a bike and you're absolutely moving there, rage on the streets. Um, and I know there's, there might be seventeen of me on that, on that, but it's still going to be fairly slow moving. Uh, so we're off to deal and talk to uh engineering and, and also the police department to make sure that they're comfortable with what, what's happening with respect to our.
I suspect that you'd be able to pedal very quickly across there.
Thank you, I appreciate the confidence.
It's a, it is an E assist, E assist bike, as I understand it.
Yes.
But uh, the state has decided that that's not a motor vehicle. So we've got the benefit without the drawback there.
It's, it's not a motor vehicle, that I think they excluded that from motor vehicle to uh, to eliminate the open container. That's why we want to put in some provisions with respect to operation of these things within our streets. Again, similar to what we did on the electric scooters.
Very good. But in terms of uh traffic speed coming across, uh, maybe the E assist will help there. Very good.
Yes, we got seventeen on the.
Uh, any further questions from Mr. Goss, please, Miss Soski.
So will, like your license we needed in North Dakota and in Minnesota?
I don't know about in Minnesota, but there'll be, there'll have to be some light liquor licensing in North Dakota and Grand Forks.
And then will we have to change your ordinance about police being? I know if, if you have a, a, an event, you have to have so many police on staff, will we have to change that ordinance also?
I don't believe so.
But there was a discussion of a liquor license and we do not currently have a classification for something like this, is that correct?
Not that I'm aware of. So it may, it may be, it may be a special event type of license, but I don't think they want to pay for a special event every time they use the, the that becomes, may become cost prohibitive. So we might have to, that would be part of the licensing provisions that we'd have to deal with and again, uh, we'd have to adopt a new licensing, not just for the liquor license, but again, similar to what did the electric scooters, there's a, there's going to be a process with respect to licensing and operating this type of uh enterprise in the city of Grand Forks.
Very good, Mr. LaRocque.
Yeah, so the way that they've operated, or they do operate in other cities is basically considering it like a party bus. Uh, we will not be selling any liquor, it will all be brought. Um, so the way they operate in any city that they're, they're currently in right now is it's, it's all bring your own as the consumer. So if you were to rent a party bus, you just have um, whatever restrictions I guess go along with that. That's what we were kind of hoping to, to contend, we aren't going to be selling to any customers when, when it comes to the actual bike itself.
So your suggestion, your, your intention is that a liquor license would not be required on?
It has not been required in other cities that the franchise is currently in thus far.
And that's something the city attorney would be reviewing. Very good, thanks. Uh, intended timeframe on this, Mr. Phil.
I think tonight we wanted to make sure you guys, there was a general consensus, let's move forward with this opportunity. And if you're good with that, we would ask Mr. Goss, when he has some draft um ordinances that we could just bring in directly to city council, because it's obviously going to require us to, to readings. And we bring it back as soon as possible. As I, I, I spoke to the, the gentleman here, um, it's spring and they probably want to get going sooner rather than later. So I know Mr. Goss will do his best he can, but getting through our processes. So we bring it back to a directly to the city council and let the developers know when we come.
We keep our city attorney very busy.
Yes. Please, Mr. I move approval on staff recommendation.
We have a motion and a second for Mrs. Soski, any further discussion, hearing that all in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion passes. Thank you, uh, item three point three, set public hearing related to substandard building at thirteen twenty-fourth Avenue North. Ms. Collins.
Yes, Mr. Weber and council members, I am bringing this forward. Uh, you will have to set the public hearing at the next meeting, so this is the beginning meeting. And since there's two, at least two people that are new to this process, I was going to go into a brief summary of what uh we do with a substandard home or structure. Uh, structure can be found substandard for one of the nine items in the ordinance. Most of the time we go forward with several, and this would be eight of the nine, it is substandard. Unfortunately, the house has outlived its use um because of lack of maintenance and age. I have been working with the gentleman that owned the house, his three brothers and their caseworker um to try to come to a conclusion and get a conclusion on this. So if you looked at the pictures, on the house is not in very good condition and it's not livable at this time, we have posted the home um as a limited entry, so they can go in and get some of their items out. My understanding is uh, most of the items are out of the house. We are looking for the house and the garage at this point. And they are working with us, they do not have the wherewithal to um demolish the home themselves or the garage. So what the process typically goes um is if you find it substandard to be demolished, you can find a substandard to be repaired. I wouldn't recommend that on this home, but you can on other homes or structures. Then uh they will be given thirty days after the public hearing to hire a contractor themselves and to get the home demolished. After that time, then the city will go forward and hire a contract. We will ask for as many bids as we can get to take the home down and the garage. I keep forgetting the garage, but yes.
I believe the neighbors have been uh requesting this, hoping for this for.
Yes, they have, they have, and we had some difficulty, yeah, going forward.
Uh, at this time, are the three brothers in agreement about this, or are we?
Yes, I've talked to two of the three, but I have not heard any pushback on it. Um, they wanted some time to uh maybe empty some things out of the garage. And they have a cat, so they want to make sure they have accommodations for the cat. Otherwise, they are anxious to move forward on this.
And the soonest that we could uh set the public hearing for is June fifth?
That's correct.
Mr. Veen, please.
Move the staff recommendation.
Yes.
Have a motion and a second, Mr. Veen, Mrs. Soski, any questions, comments, hearing on, on, they were saying aye.
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 Oppose same signal, same sign, um, motion passes unanimously, so thank you, Ms. Collins. Um, item three point four, introduce ordinances to update uh city code sections relating to building codes. Uh, and we'll just take these all at the same time, Mr. Veen, is that correct?
Yeah, Vice President Weber, um, members of the council, um, I wrote it a little bit different than you probably, those of you that have been on the council and for the new members, used to come in as a separate um staff request. What I've done is what's included in the actual staff report is all six of them. Um, the sixth one is, is a leaded up to the codes, but it's still, it's still an ordinance. Um, so this essentially.
Sorry, Mr. Soski, do we need all of this uh read into the, the record or can we just go forward? Thanks.
Um, and we'll, we'll clean it up uh as, as, as the readings come forward. Uh, you can, you can see in one of the ordinances that I quoted, so we'll, we'll make that into the ordinance on, actually how the ordinance is, is read. One thing I did want to share with, with this group, there wasn't a lot of tremendous changes on any of this this year. Um, the building code is, is um located in the staff report, building code, the international residential code, the fuel code went through that uh the required boards that are, that are appointed by, and people are not by council. So the Board of Appeals went through building code and the international residential code. Uh, mechanical board went through the uh fuel gas code and mechanical code. No big changes, there are a lot cleaning up uh throughout all, all the codes. Uh, the one that was at one aspect on um several of you, I've spoken to, I don't have a new code that I was going to bring forth, it's International Property Maintenance Code. Uh, my intent is still to bring that forth. Uh, that got stuck in the Board of Appeals, uh, they have some more questions on it. And that actually has to do with not only uh rental, rental homes, how we enforce rental homes, but also what this calling was just up here, I'm speaking of, it cleans up some of the ordinances. Uh, but we need to pull back a little bit because we have a lot in ordinance, but there's a, now these codes capture a lot of that. So we're just going to dissect a little bit more, my intent, I think I'll bring that within the next, next two months, um, after these, these ones go through. Uh, but this coincides with where, where everybody else is at the state right now, twenty twenty-one hours.
Mr. Veen, Mr. Veen.
Yeah, uh, you've probably answered it, but I was thinking, what year code is this one now?
This is a two thousand twenty-one, so uh you may think that we're actually behind. Um, the state of North Dakota just adopted in, in January, but into law, the building code is, is the twenty-one. Fire Marshal's Office is adopting the international fire code, I believe it cites on June, June first. So we're, from our perspective or from um historical perspectives, we're six months behind typically. But I'm, I feel comfortable with that because there's no big issues. Now, if there was other big issues, we, we would bring community forums and things of that nature, but there it'd be tough for me, and if you asked me what's really changed, majority of it's just been the numbering in the year, the couple.
So if I could. Um, are all of these twenty twenty-one codes?
Yes.
Each, so all of them align with the same type of time frame, so you can put them all together?
Yes. Uh, the one, um, misplaced president, whoever, a customer would be, what I would like to do is these six uh go through, go through these readings and at a later time, there's still one more twenty-one, twenty-one code that I'd like to bring, that's International Property Maintenance Code, but that's one that has never been adopted within the city. So more, more discussion with that. But this, these codes, uh, these affect the operations of the city and the operations of the inspection department and the fire department.
Some motion, Mr. Veen, second from Mr. Carmody, any further questions, hearing that all in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion passes unanimously. Um, item three point five, receiver's big award for project number eight five two nine point zero two, upgrade the flood stations two zero two, two zero three and two ten.
Uh, good evening, so this project, uh, we originally awarded the electrical contract in March, um, and we redid the general contract to see if we could get any bidders. FFW has been working with a couple of local contractors and it sounds like we do have interests. So we'll open those bids on Thursday and bring back those results on the next council meeting.
Questions or comments?
No, I, no action at this point.
They, no, basically, yeah, just moving into council.
Very good. Thank you, and uh, item, we do need a motion to move forward, a motion from Mr. Veen, second from Mrs. Soski. All in favor, say goodbye, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion passes, three point seven.
Hello, good evening. Thank you, Vice President Weber, members of the committee. So just like Carmen's item, this one is also a big award that will be opening later this week. And the next one you're going to hear from me is same way. So first one I've got is the rehab of thirty-second Avenue South from the interstate to South Washington Street. So this is a mill and overlay concrete, uh, panel repairs, ADA ramps, and then some other miscellaneous items that are associated with that work. This is a project that's being administered through the DOT, so we do have a cost share on it and we're at about ten percent, which is roughly two hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and forty thousand dollars. So this is going to be opened by the DOT on Friday and like the last project, we'll bring this one back on next Monday. So just looking to move forward to council.
Very good, and my mistake, this is item three point six, uh, thank you, Mr. Davis, and any comments, questions? So have a motion and a second, um, all in favor, say goodbye, say aye.
Aye.
Same, motion passes. And item three point seven, uh, again, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Vice President Weber, members of the committee. So this project's been brought up a couple of times tonight, it's the Luthe Park Improvements. This is the one that's meant to solve some drainage problems that we've got out there as well as install some new pavers to kind of revitalize that park with some other additional aesthetic features. So again, this one is opening later this week on Thursday, so the bids will be brought back next Monday.
Very good, a motion from Mrs. Soski, second for Mr. Veen, all in favor, say goodbye, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, uh, item three point eight, uh, bid award for Town Square Foundation Reconstruction, it's Richards.
Same story as my predecessors, um, you know, open bids on this project on Thursday. This is for the reconstruction of the foundation for the fountain, Town Square.
Motion for Mrs. Soski, second for Mr. from, a motion for Mrs. Soski, second for Mr. Carmody, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion passes. It was Richards and uh, item three point nine has been scratched from the agenda, so move to item three point ten. I request to wait bid process and approve purchase of front load sanitation truck.
Good evening, Vice President Weber and council members. Um, I don't enjoy bringing these sorts of things to you. I don't, um, I, I prefer to bid out every possible purchase the city does and follow the, excuse me, the purchasing policy. However, we were notified early last week that they have a truck sitting in Fargo that is available to be purchased in times of the essence. I asked if they would hold the truck for us if we were to go to bid on this truck and they could not guarantee that that would happen. And so I reached out to another supplier who has in the past bid on this truck. They said they are unable to bid on a truck for us, for a front mode truck, because they can't get that chassis for us. And so in visiting with him though, he did inform me of a recent bid with the city of Fargo. And so I did attach those bid results for you just to ensure that we're getting uh value, you know, uh, comparison for this truck and the low bid for that truck was three hundred and thirty-six thousand one hundred and eighty-five. And we are being quoted three hundred and thirty-six thousand four hundred dollars from Northland Truck Sales. So I feel like this is appropriate price, motions.
You have a motion. Second, Soski, this is what front load sanitation truck dealers always tell me. Any further questions or comments, hearing that all in favor, say goodbye, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion passes unanimously. Uh, we've already covered item three point one one, which leaves us to uh, Mrs. Soski, any uh city council member discussion members this evening?
Uh, nice, thank you. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. White, sorry, skip to read.
No, thank you, Mr. Weber.
Mr. Veen, looking for a motion to adjourn?
I'm looking for your man.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say goodbye, say aye.
Right.